Second from Sedbury. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved. Uh, next up, we have our public input session. This would be an opportunity for anybody in the public to address the commission uh for anything that is not on our published agenda tonight. We will hold separate public hearings for two variances and a rezone. Uh, but if there's anything else that somebody would like to address the commission about, now would be your opportunity, and we'd ask that you would come up and state your name and address for the record, please. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close our public input session. We have nothing under unfinished business and moving on to new business. First up is zoning variance 2023-51818. A zoning variance request on a 15-foot right-of-way side. Uh, staff report, please.
The applicant here is requesting a five-foot variance of that R1 15-foot right-of-way setback for an existing dwelling that's located 10 feet from the western property line. The adopted zoning map identifies the developed parcel as R1 residential single-family. The site is located east of the intersection of Trafalgar Road, a minor arterial, and Kewood Drive, a residential street. Adjacent land use includes developed single-family residential, undeveloped single-family residential, and conservation. Residential use is in keeping with the development of a neighborhood as recommended by the comp plan. A residential building permit authorized the structure to be located 22.2 feet from the western property line. Presently, the structure is less than 15 feet from this property line, thus the reason for this request. Presently, the structure is located 10 feet from the proposed property line, and the components of the septic system that serve the dwelling are located approximately 3 feet from the property line. If this zoning variance is approved, a zoning variance of 109186 is also required for the current placement of the septic system, as it does not meet the required 10-foot setback from the western property line. Staff finds the subject site has the ability to support a single-family residential use with adequate access to utilities and street frontage. The site is not challenged by topography or impacted by the floodplain. Staff does not find the request to meet all three review criteria set out in section 109 or 2D due to a lack of hardship. Staff recommends denial of this request based on the analysis above. All legal notifications have been met by staff. No public comments were received at the time of this report, and external agency and utility comments are contained in your agenda packets on pages 14 and 15. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
So this was approved, and then they moved it during, when they started construction. They altered the plan after they started.
Correct.
Did they stop work on it after they found this error?
It is presently under a stop-work order.
Okay.
It is under a stop-work order right now.
They're not.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? If you go ahead and come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, sir, and we'll let you uh add to the staff report.
I get the part here.
Understand.
Matthew Jensen, 2K Drive.
Okay. Uh, the staff basically kind of gave us a rundown of their findings on your variance request and, and the, and the lack thereof of hardship presented at this point for approving the variance request. So this is your, kind of your opportunity to make, plead your case to the commission, and they will ask you any questions you might have.
Okay, uh, so what happened is the house got shifted over to zoning, certain zones that were approved setbacks. So it's on 10-foot setback. So it's like shipped over to...
What?
Speaking in the microphone, please. So it got shifted over to the 10-foot setbacks? That may help, too. Does that help?
Yes.
There you go. So the house was originally approved at 22 and a half feet. So we had multiple plot plans to help approve the 12% grade. So the house then got shifted over to the setbacks that were approved on 10, 10 feet. So then the house is set there, and the house then got turned into the ACC, which was approved on all those where the house sits now. So now we're stuck with them saying, sorry, we messed up, we messed up, but you're at fault.
Any questions for the applicant?
Who's, who's "we" messed up? Who's "we"?
The city and ACC.
How did the city mess up?
The city messed up because they approved the zone, zoning setbacks. That were wrong. So on the plot plan, it shows a seven and a half and a 10. So the house is at originally at 22 foot, so we scooted it over like we do on any other lot to stay within the zoning setbacks. And I've already, I've talked to the city and ACC, they both have admitted fault on this.
So you're saying, I mean, I, only the planning commission can alter the setbacks on a piece of property, and I don't remember seeing a plot plan that showed the setbacks being reduced. Are you saying the setbacks were drawn improperly on the plot plan?
The plot plans I turned in, yes. My surveyor did say, the ones he turned in were wrong, and that's the ones we turned into the city.
Okay.
And those are the ones that the city approved.
Well, no, they don't approve the setbacks, they just approve the plot plan.
Right, that's the, and those are all on the plot plan that I turned in.
But the city's not responsible for verifying the nuance, that's your surveyor's responsibility.
So they're not responsible for saying if the setbacks are wrong, right, or where the house sits?
No, sir.
Okay, 'cause they, they have in the past have said, hey, your setbacks aren't right, you need to change these.
Understand, but ultimately, it's the, whoever prepares the plot plan is their responsibility to make sure that it's accurate, not the city staff.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, this is a zoning variance request. We do need to conduct a public hearing, so if you would go ahead and step aside for a minute, we will open the floor to the public.
Where you want?
Anywhere you'd like to be is fine. Uh, anybody in the public that would like to address the planning commission concerning this variance request, if you would come up and state your name and address, and we will give you five minutes to make your statements to the planning commission. Yes, sir?
Larry Williams, 109 Mayfair Drive, Belavista. Uh, I guess in, in looking through the project record for this application, it would appear that there might have been a comedy of errors that was, that has occurred. If you approve it, uh, there's a situation with apparently the ACC that requires a screen, screening planting uh area, which isn't complied with here, which means that Carroll Electric may have to move their power lines, at least that's what the documentation showed. I don't know if that's true or not. Is that a true statement of their condition? Does anyone know?
Confirmed. Carroll Electric will have to relocate the overhead power lines that exist to create a buffering distance between the structure and the lines, and the ACC administrator, Selena Lee, has provided a comment that they will not be vacating the screening easement as shown on the plat.
So one way or the other, something has to give. It would appear that a comedy of errors actually occurred. When I was a, a manager of projects and things, uh, the buck stopped at my desk. Uh, on one occasion, I had a surveyor that laid out a right-of-way for a water main in front of a property going a half a mile. Unfortunately, the first property that we encountered was one that did not have dedication of right-of-way, so I ended up having to buy the right-of-way after the water main got installed, and it was pricey, but it was cheaper than relocating the water main. So what it means is that as the, as the project manager, as the owner, as the director, you're responsible for it, and so if the errors occurred, it's up to you to catch them, that's your job, you're running the project, so I don't feel that a variance was warranted.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this variance request? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, if the applicant would like to come back up to the microphone, commissioners, it is up to you all for discussion.
The, um, that comment, under Carroll Electric, Derek, is that, whose comment is that we have prepared to design a cost-relocator line enough to get proper property lines for this property?
Yeah, speaking of microphone, can you see this?
Oh, it's not on. Sorry. And your staff comments? Um, it, there's a, in red, there's a comment under Carroll Electric, we have prepared to design a cost-relocate our line enough to get proper, is that directly from Carroll Electric?
That is.
Okay.
So on the original plat, I'm looking at it right now, it shows a seven and a half foot utility easement and a 10-foot screening easement on top of that, so that's 70 and a half feet, correct?
Are you looking at this, at the plat or the plot plan?
I'm looking at the plat, the subdivision.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay, and what is the set, is that the setback we're referring to, is there an additional setback on top of that?
There's an additional setback. The R1 district requires a 15-foot right-of-way setback.
That's in the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't deal with the 40-foot screening easement shown on the plat?
That'd be a question for our city attorney.
No. No, um, this is, you know, we have our setback and, and the parties, private parties have their own private obligations to meet with whoever, and this case could be the ACC's, but there's really nothing we can do about that if we were even so inclined.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna...
You need to turn your microphone back on.
I was just gonna piggyback off of Attorney Kelly, just to make sure we all understand. So the zoning variance is over the zoning ordinance, which is the 15-foot side setback in the property line slash right-of-way. However, the plat that everyone is seeing, there is a 7.5-foot private utility easement and an additional 10-foot private screening easement, so that's 17.5 feet. We, as the city, have no oversight over it all. Uh, we are only looking at the 15-foot intrusion or the 5-foot intrusion on the 15-foot setback.
Any other, um, questions or comments from the commissioners?
I have a...
Yes, ma'am.
Staff question. So the city requires 15 feet, correct?
Correct, on the land use side.
Thus, building permit application that was submitted by the applicant said 22 and change, point two, and then they moved it back to 10, which is 5 feet into the 15. Is that correct?
So the plot plan that was turned into the city, our planner viewer approved the house 22 and some change feet, 22 and a half feet or so away from that property line. However, as they've stated, the plot plan that was turned into the private sector or the other side shows it where it's at now, but the city approved it 22.5 feet away from that setback.
Okay, thank you.
From that property line. 22.2, point of clarification.
Any other questions for comments? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve zoning variance 2023-51818. Motion to approve. Got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Got a second from Dool, you call the rule, please.
Lloyd?
No.
Farner?
No.
Portillo?
No.
Dool?
No.
Sedbury?
No.
Ellis?
No. Your request is denied. Uh, staff will get with you on the next step, sir.
Okay.
All right, next up, we have zoning variance 2023-51808, a zoning variance request associated with large-scale 51807 regarding the required parking setbacks and landscape frontage and perimeter at 103 Town Center. Uh, from what I understand, this B, C, and D will be requested to be tabled by the applicant, but since we went ahead and published the, uh, the zoning variance, we will have to conduct a public hearing. Uh, so Taylor, if you want to take it really short, and then we'll try to work through this one pretty quickly.
Sure. Um, we did meet our public hearing requirements. The legal ad was posted in the Weekly Vista on October 25th, and a sign was posted on site November 1st. The applicant is seeking a variance on 109-98B3, which is the commercial uh parking setbacks, and then of course, 109-217, landscape frontage and the perimeter. Uh, the applicant basically is here to expand and remodel the city hall, as you'll see with the waiver and large scale. However, the zoning variance is over these two codes specifically, but they require a public hearing. Um, other than that, staff has nothing further to add, and the applicant is here for their side of the zoning variance, but I do believe they are going to request a table as you've noted.
All right, any, uh, any questions for the staff? All right, does the applicant have anything that they would like to add to the staff report?
Hi, Barry Williams with Crafton Toll. It's, uh, pretty simple. After our meeting last week, meeting with everyone, we decided to revisit the site plan. By doing so, we should be able to eliminate two of the four variances and possibly three of the six waivers, so we are in the process of rebuilding our site plan package, and we'll be presenting that back to the city staff for review and hope to be here next month for planning commission.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. Uh, if there is anybody in the audience that would like to address the planning commission concerning this zoning variance request, if you would come up and state your name and address, and we will give you five minutes to address the commission. All right, seen. Yes, sir?
Larry Williams, 109 Mayfair Drive in Belavista. Uh, I guess I'm disappointed about, uh, items B, C, and D being on the agenda. I think it's a, the result of poor planning on the city's leadership part. In the past, uh, we need, we need an expansion for city government, for the administrative offices, for CDS. It's been kicked down the road now, uh, after the first, first four years, second four years, third four years, fourth four years, now we're into the fifth four years. And so the project itself has been ignored, has been postponed, has been not addressed. I think the planning is poor. Uh, the requirements for variances or waivers on this site is due to overdevelopment. Some of the items that are noted as deficiencies were approved, but there are many that still would not conform to the requirements of the city standard. I, I suspect that if this were a private project, it likely would not reach approval, because you're putting 10 pounds in an eight-pound bucket. Uh, it's overbuilding on the site, we don't have enough space there for it. Uh, the site was reduced long before the city acquired it, when they acquired the fire department, police station, et cetera. But that's neither here nor there. Uh, we acquired it as it is today, and, uh, it's not a, it's a self-imposed hardship is really what we're seeing by poor planning on our part. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this variance request? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, we do have a request from the applicant to table all three of these items to our next planning commission meeting. Do we need to take any action on that, Mr. Kelly, or just move it on?
You need to move, go ahead and table it.
All right, can I get a motion to table items B, C, and D, please?
So moved.
Got a motion from, uh, from Lloyd, and a second from Farner. Call the rule, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Ellis?
Abstained. All right, B, C, and D have been tabled onto the next planning commission. Uh, finally, we have, for our new business tonight, we have rezone 2023-51765, a rezone request at the corner of Houston Road and Commonwealth Road from R2, uh, two-family residential to C1 neighborhood commercial. Uh, parcel number 16-20950-000. Uh, just real quick for the public, um, we do have certain rules of order here in our planning commission chambers. We do ask that everybody in the audience refrain from cheering and making audible noises while you're in the audience. We want to give every person an opportunity to address the planning commission. It is not a question-and-answer time between the audience and the planning commission or between the audience and the applicant, but every person is allowed to get up and speak to us and take your five minutes, uh, and we want to give each person the opportunity to do that. If, if people are starting to, um, cheer and yell and shout-out comments from the audience, we will ask you to, uh, remove yourself from the room. If not, we do have law enforcement here to help you exit the room. Uh, we do want to maintain order. Thank you. Um, so first off, we will go ahead and have a staff report, please.
All right. Subject property is located at the corner of Houston Road and Commonwealth Road, is known as the reserved property of the Melanie subdivision. The applicant requests the rezone of this parcel from R2 residential two-family to C1 neighborhood commercial. The adopted zoning map identifies the subject parcel as R2 residential two-family, and the intent of the C1 district is to provide for development of small-scale office, retail, and commercial developments serving primarily, primarily local needs in a location convenient to the supporting residential area.
Wait here, here.
Sorry.
Can you read it a bit faster?
These locations are adjacent to residential areas, and therefore, this district contains performance criteria in order to ensure compatibility. It is further intended that this commercial area not be enlarged or extended beyond its boundaries or encroach upon the existing residential areas. Permitted uses in this district include, but are not limited to, professional services and offices, bank, insurance, real estate, personal services, beauty salons and spas, restaurants, public uses, parks, libraries, local, state, or federal, federal public buildings, and a limited number of other uses may be allowed by conditional use permit only. Neighborhood commercial, bulk and area regulations were met as the parcel is plus or minus 1.75 acres with widths and depths exceeding 100 feet. The district purpose also notes C1 districts should be adjacent to neighborhood areas to provide those neighborhoods with small offices, retail, and other commercial needs. This criterion has also been met as the subject site adjoins properties that include R2 to the north, R3 residential districts to the south and west, and P1 to the north and east with nearby, uh, commercial zoning, uh, the Metfield complex. The adopted comprehensive plan promotes the development of a neighborhood center with small commercial activity to serve adjacent residential uses. Neighborhood center nodes include a mix of retail, service, and institu- institutional uses. Commonwealth Road is classified as a minor arterial, and Houston Road is classified as a collector, both with direct trail system access. The multimodal needs of the adjacent residential and commercial land uses are met with access to Highway 71 and established trails. All legal ad requirements were met. A public hearing sign was posted on the property as well. Uh, public comments have been received, and, uh, staff recommends approval based on the analysis provided above.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, I do know that, um, Ms. Workman, or not Ms. Workman, Ms. Robertson has a couple other, uh, points of clarification for us.
Yeah, I typically just like to take this moment to kind of go over the basic rezone process real quick. Um, basically, rezones are a recommendation of the planning commission, so that's what's happening here tonight after the public hearing, and then the city council is the authority that approves rezones. So an approval will not be made tonight, it does go on to city council if a recommendation of approval is given. If a recommendation, if a recommendation fails, the applicant has 30 days to appeal that to our city clerk, and then if they do that, it then may go on to city council for further consideration. However, if they do not meet that 30-day dead, deadline, then it would ultimately, um, die, as you want to call it. Um, rezones require notifications of three different types, technically four here in Belavista, we go a little bit of, uh, above and beyond. We, uh, require that everyone within 200 feet of the property is notified within 15 days, but we push that a little more, so it's actually more than 15 days. We post a legal ad in Weekly Vista for all local residents to see in the newspaper. We publish it on our website for all residents to see, and then of course, we put the big red ugly sign that we're all familiar with on the front property line, so that way everyone driving by who may not live in the area may also know what's going on. So four notification tactics have been met with this requirement, um, to get us all here tonight, that's why we have such a great showing tonight. Um, but if, just a recommendation, or just a reminder that a final determination is not made tonight, only a recommendation. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, with that, we'll go ahead and give the applicant an opportunity to come up and address the planning commission with their request. So if you would come up and state your name, please, and who you represent.
My name is Gene Grossclose, I represent Cooper Communities. Um, I really don't have much to add, it was a pretty good staff report, I thought. Uh, the, the basic things that we'd like, uh, the commissioners to focus on is the fact that all publicly stated criteria, both in the ordinance and legal, have been met by this application, as well as the 2040 plan. That is in compliance as well. So those are the criteria that, uh, have been publicly stated that we must meet, we have met those, and we respectfully request your support to allow us to move on to city council. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? All righty, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I go ahead? I, I think it would be helpful, not for Gene, I, just, uh, to talk to you about what the permissible considerations are that you could talk about.
Absolutely.
I wrote a memo on this about nine years ago, and I occasionally have to pass it back out, just because we need to be reminded of everything, and I know people who live in the public aren't up to date on these things every day, because they don't deal with them, nor should they be up to date with them. But, uh, I say this probably more so for the benefit of those who are in attendance as much as for members of the commission, because I do believe you all have a firm grasp, um, on what you can look at in terms of how to decide whether or not to rezon property. It is a common issue that you face, both planning commission and city councils decide whether or not to grant a rezoning. Uh, it is, in making the decision, it is necessary that no impermissible considerations are part of the decision. So then that begs the question, well, how do you decide whether or not to do it? There are several factors in the law, which the planning commission or the city council ultimately, uh, may take into account in deciding whether or not to rezon property. Uh, you've heard of a report and recommendation from the staff, and, uh, and, uh, that has been presented to you. Uh, that report included in the analysis is how the affected properties included in the city's master land use plan. Uh, the master land use plan is a document approved by resolution to council, but it is not legally binding in the sense that a plan is meant to be that, it's just a plan, it's not legally binding, and the city, Arkansas Supreme Court has said that. Uh, it is a consideration. State law authorizes cities to create zoning and development plans in order to promote, in accordance with present future needs. The safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the citizens, that's a, that's a quote from the statute. Plans may provide among other things for, and there's a list here, efficiency and economy in the process of development, the appropriate and best land use, uh, you, the appropriate and best use of land, convenience of traffic and circulation of people and goods, safety from fire and other dangers, adequate light and air and the use occupancy of buildings, helpful and convenient distribution of population, good civic design and arrangement, adequate public utilities and facilities, wise and efficient expenditure of funds. Uh, that's also out of the statute. Conformance of a rezoning request to those criteria, uh, are legitimate considerations and deciding whether or not to grant a rezoning. Now, in addition to that, the Arkansas courts have recognized and approved several other factors, uh, that a planning commissioner or council ultimately may consider when deciding on whether to rezon property. These include, uh, first, public opposition, uh, and the opinions of local residents when they reflect all the reasonable concerns. Uh, traffic, particularly increased traffic on limited roads or the increased risk of accidents, noise, decreased value of adjoining land, potential for criminal activity, litter increase potential, uh, increased strain or load on sewer, uh, and the avoidance of spot zoning. And, uh, so, just so you know what spot zoning is, uh, spot zoning is invalid because it amounts to an arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable treatment of land in a limited area within a pre, within a district. So, uh, it, uh, it's basically singling out a single parcel, uh, in a limited area, and includes zoning one lot in a matter entirely different from the surrounding areas. So the best example I can give you of that would be, say, for example, you had single-family homes, and it's all in this area, and there's a parcel right in the middle, and it's industrial. Well, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense, and, and so the courts have said, when, when you're that dramatic, uh, that can be a spot zone, you can avoid that and consider that in terms of zoning, uh, application. Now, it is going to be possible that you will hear applicants, uh, or others talk about the highest and best use, uh, of their land from a standpoint of maximizing property's economic value. The applicant here has not made reference to that. Often you will hear reference to that. Uh, you may consider economic benefit, but you're not bound by it. Uh, the courts have stated that rezoning is not justified solely on the ground, that it is necessary to put a particular tract to its most remunerative use. And what that means, in other words, is that economic benefit plus other factors may justify rezoning, but economic benefit alone does not. So what happens, uh, if you fail to use the legally permissible considerations, which are these things that I've talked to you about, it's in the memo, it's... things that I've talked to you about, it's in the memo, and we've discussed many times, the decision could be deemed arbitrary and capricious. And if it's deemed arbitrary and capricious, you're violating the due process of the applicant violating the Constitution of that state's and the Arkansas Constitution. So it's important we can't go beyond the factors we can consider. Now, it should go beyond saying that decisions based on personal animosity, retribution, general dislike are arbitrary and capricious and illegal. So, and I'll go ahead and sum up this as well, because I know this often comes up, and I didn't really summarize this part in the memo, because I know it's largely for you. One of the natural questions that we get asked, and what people want to know when they're here, what are they going to do with that property? We can't ask that question. What we have to look at that in terms of, they can do anything that that zone that they're asking for could allow. So in terms of the precise plan that they have, we don't have grounds to look at that. Their precise development plan is not a consideration you can take. You can look at all potential uses within that requested zone and determine whether or not it meets the criteria that you have. So there's no magic formula, there's no you've got to approve if, you've got to deny if. It is a judgment call to that extent, so as people come and talk to you, I know they're going to want to know what's going on, so I wanted all of you to know what that information was before we get started.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the staff attorney? All righty, well, we're going to go ahead and conduct our public hearing then at this point. As I stated before, we want to give each and every person in the audience an opportunity to address the planning commission if you would like to. We do ask that you that we respect everybody's turn at the podium and allow them to speak without being interrupted from the audience. When you do come up to the front, please go ahead and state your name and your address for the record. We will need that for the meeting minutes later on. I will, I will say that we do have a very large stack of communications that we've received from the public. We appreciate you all sending those to us, talking about safety and traffic and drainage, the natural character of the piece of property in question, and all the commissioners have received all of these emails and have been reviewing these over the last couple of weeks. So I do want, I do want the public to know we have been receiving your communications. Also, I did check with the city attorney, and I do, I do want to go ahead and do kind of a, just kind of a polling of the audience, and if I could, go ahead and get everybody who is supportive of this rezoning request to go ahead and raise your hand if you're in the audience. I count two. All right, anybody in the audience who is opposed to the rezoning request, if you would go ahead and raise your hand? All righty, thank you. Okay, at this point, we will go ahead and open up the floor to anybody in the public who would like to address the planning commission. Once again, we do ask that you gave your, give your name and address for the record, and we will limit you to five minutes, and we have had a lot of talk about drainage and traffic and the safety of the trail, but please, sir, go ahead.
My name is Don, Senate 22, Brittany Lane. Another consideration is, that's an area that is particularly important to our youth. We have a skateboard park right nearby, we have golf, obviously, and with no idea of what's going in there, the residents are scared to death. Yes, it could just be a nice little doctor's office, or it could be a restaurant with a liquor license. We have no way of controlling that, and as citizens, we would like to see, stay the way it is. Particularly concerned about, you've talked about traffic, we've got golf courts, golf carts coming one way, we have bicycles coming two ways, plus the traffic, and quite frankly, when I'm driving my golf cart, we don't need any more traffic there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yeah, go ahead and keep on moving. We want to, we want to work through this as quick as possible, but get everybody a chance.
Yeah, I didn't know a lot of people signed the petition, so I don't know if you want to go, I mean, the, sorry, got petitions on mine, but the sign up list when they came in.
No, we'll just go ahead, anybody who wants to come and speak, whether you signed up or not, please feel free to come up.
Gotcha. Peggy Lucas, 23, Duesbury. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'm against the rezoning of 1620950 on Commonwealth in Houston. I've sent you all a couple of emails. Thank you, Ms. Lloyd, for your response and the conversation today. Jason, I don't know how you put it when you said that tonight, but there was one clause that said, is it in the general interest or the welfare of the residents? It's not. And so I travel that greenway all the time. It's a safety issue, and there's already a lot of congestion here. Mr. Sebber, you live in that area. Linda, you live in that area. Last year, 1,300 residents came together and signed a petition against that, again, using their voice to stop something that doesn't make sense. People at large are not against commercial. They're against commercial on that corner. It's the wrong place. So 1,300 residents last year came forward and said, not on that corner. And so far this year, we have, just in a short order, a couple of weeks, we have 300 residents that have signed a petition. All the things that you mentioned is, it's the safety, the congestion, the traffic. We just put in a half a million dollar greenway that people walk by all the time, so the community is speaking to you. We're here tonight to ask you to come against this, this request. We want to preserve the natural setting in our residential areas. We want to be safe walking along the greenway and crossing the trails. The traffic and people who don't live here, that would be coming to a commercial entity like that, it's not wanted. Living in Bella Vista is an intentional choice. We choose to live in this beautiful area away from commercial on the corners of our residential neighborhoods. That is a decision that we make when we come here. We choose to drive to commercial entities where we work and where we shop. There are countless references in the 2040 plan that speak to preserving the natural setting and maintaining the safety of our neighborhoods. We need your help tonight, guys. I also wanted to ask Cooper Communities to reconsider this request. It would be great if we could work together collectively to figure out what to do with that corner, and I had a goal tonight to try to meet somebody from Cooper that, so it wasn't Cooper Communities, and I met Mr. Gene tonight, and I had a great conversation with him. He read all the comments. So we just hope that we can take the comments and all the communication that is coming from the residents and channel that into something positive for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy McCowen, I live at 36 Willington Drive in Bella Vista. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I thank you for the opportunity to appear here this afternoon and to make my comments in regards to this rezoning request. Excuse me. I served on the planning commission several years ago when commercial zoning was being considered for a Walmart neighborhood market on Highway 71 and Oldham Drive on the southwest corner. That was a very, very controversial hearing at that time. I remember well the issue and the distinction of what was proper zoning for that corner as versus what was the use going to be for that corner, the actual use. As a commission member, we could only consider the proper zoning. We could not consider the, the use itself. Some of us had some concerns with the proposed use of the Walmart store at this location, and its possible detrimental effects on some of the businesses that are located in the Sugar Creek Shopping Center. But again, we could only consider the zoning of that area and not the designated use that was being planned. We are in somewhat of a similar situation with this rezoning request today. While there is not a specific use being presented at this time, I suspect some of us, including me, would be amenable to and like some of the proposed, some of the uses that are in the neighborhood zoning district plan. For example, a small restaurant with an area incorporated into the outdoor area for outdoor seating and that type of thing. Maybe something similar to the beer garden at Blowing Springs would be acceptable. However, we would be adamantly opposed to some of the other uses in the zoning district, such as the one that was proposed approximately a year ago and was ultimately withdrawn by the developer. Thus the dilemma. We either have to accept all the uses that are in the zoning ordinance for this area or none of the uses. So based on that, I have to state my opposition to this rezoning request, and I urge the commission to deny the request and keep this property in its attractive natural setting. In closing, I would like to state a message for Cooper Communities. If this zoning is ultimately approved, you've done a great job, and are very proud to live here, in developing a beautiful community and setting up a system that provides for great amenities at a very reasonable cost. But please remember the people who have moved here, the reasons they have moved here, and have made this success possible for you, the developer. If it wasn't for some, not, it wasn't for some not so properties such as the discount store that was presented about a year ago, so we wouldn't have to drive very far, or if it wasn't for some other type of commercial discount store, so that we wouldn't have to drive very far, we could, we could be supportive, I think we could be supportive, or some of us could be supportive. But please keep our concerns in mind if this is approved in what you ultimately get done on this property. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and I urge your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jan Hoffner. I live at 7 Fairway Drive. I'm in eyesight view of this lot. I walk out my front door, and I see that parcel. All of you have already received what I'm about to read publicly, or part of what I'm going to read publicly. I'm very opposed to this change. Safety is my primary concern. You already have had people talk about traffic, you have the playground, the golfers. We already have people trying to get across those two main roads, Collector Road, I think one of them was called, even though to me it's a busy road, and those are very dangerous situations. Even some of the golfers, you know, the traffic won't pay attention to them as they're walking, or even some of those lights that flash for our people on the trail, you know, they're disregarded. Nobody has mentioned the fact that Commonwealth is also a school bus stop. Many, the bus stops are multiple places on there. This is also a street that has had some safety concerns for the last year. We haven't had streetlights on Commonwealth at all because they're waiting for these new lights to come in. The traffic on the residential streets will greatly improve, increase. That entire length of Fairway, which there's no exit out of there, you have to turn around at the end of the street, you know, where Ms. Lloyd lives, and that's going to improve. You're going to have headlights, noise, performance. We will all become just basically a big turnaround for anybody who's coming there to see, to be at these businesses or at this business. I was interested in what Mr. Kelly said, and I would love to have a copy of what he read tonight. That was very helpful. In fact, I think every note that he was giving speaks to why this shouldn't be developed as commercial. For long-range planning, a commercial development in this, in this parcel would be so out of place. If you refer to the online maps that are provided by both the city of Bella Vista and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, you can see that the only properties that are not residential in this area are POA properties. This does not seem like a reasonable place to have a commercial development, and I believe the city would be setting a negative precedent for commercial zoning this close to residential homes. I did speak back and forth by text quite a bit with Community Development, Christopher Hyatt, and I appreciate you answering many of my questions. However, we agree to disagree. The two examples he gave me that he felt were most compatible to this little tiny parcel was Cunningham Corner, where Busanos is, et cetera, et cetera, and the, the business area that's right by the Highlands Gate. You know, you have, you have the banks and the, and all those corners are gas stations or banks. I don't see how they're comparable, even though that's all that I could get from Community Development. Again, he was very, with respect, he answered all my questions, and we agreed to disagree. It's not a comparable situation. When Mr. Kelly was speaking, it went through my head, I thought, what are some of the best things that could go on this property, and what are some of the worst things that could go on this property? That will be decided down the road by whoever buys it from Cooper. But it also went through my head, I thought, my goodness, I hope we don't get a marijuana dispensary on that corner. Would that be allowed as retail? I, I think it might be, you know, I, I can't imagine anything worse. The beer garden or gear garden, you know, I'm certainly not in favor of having that on a corner. That is right down the road from a playground. I don't think that would be appropriate, so again, that's out of everybody's hands right now until there's a buyer. I mentioned this to Ms. Lloyd and to Derry Snow. Our little community there on Fairway and Performance, the last few years have been pretty rough on us. We, we're on the very edge of that one mile mark from the stump dump, which we got no support at all for one year to get anything done. I know that's not your problem, but if you look at our cumulative history of that little street, please just leave us alone. Don't, don't put a business in the middle of our residential area. I'm begging you, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. Larry Wilm's, 109 Mayfair Drive. I would, I would ask the commission if you, at the conclusion and based on the evaluation of all of the input, and on your wisdom, I'd like to refer back to Attorney Kelly's comments. I think there are some things there that may not have been fully flushed out when we looked at the staff report that could reveal some considerations here that may not have been brought to light, and so I would ask you to table the final decision at the conclusion of this consideration on the, on the property or on the application, if you table it until December, a meeting for final action by you.
Lyle Olson, 18, Melinda Lane, Bella Vista. I was supposed, daughter was supposed to be here. She lives at number two Lunsford Lane, so she's right across the street, you know, from this plot of land, and I guess the biggest concern is, is we don't know what's going to go there if it's rezoned commercial one. You know, that's, I think, the biggest concern of everybody around here, you know, so if we could leave it residential, we know that it's going to be residential, you know, whether it's townhouses or something else, you know, and I would ask you to keep it residential if at all possible. Thank you.
My name is Charles Heidelberg. Address is 24 Constant Circle. Just last week, my wife and I made a turn right where this area is. Bicycle was shot off of the path that goes right in front of the clubhouse, and he's lucky he's still alive today. When we moved to our street, there were six houses. Today, there is 17. So that will tell you about the growth of the whole area. Putting a commercial facility in that spot is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. We've been up there for about 26 years, and the growth has been, as you all know, we don't need it. We're perfectly happy to go to outlets. We're perfectly happy to go to an attorney that's already established, and we just don't need a commercial property on that corner at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cheryl Campbell, 10 Poly Drive. I've talked to many people, and one of the main things that bothers us is that we, by a big majority, said we do not want this. And it was taken. We kind of feel like we got stabbed in the back by Cooper for starting this all over again. We voiced our concerns. We told you it was not good for children to be on that path. Even now, it's, you really have to be careful. There's too much traffic already. We don't need a place to eat and gather. We have the clubhouse. It was hard to keep people coming to that. So why would we want something else? We do not want this, have never wanted this, and we would like for the council to accept those findings that have been before you before. We're tired of being pushed around by Cooper. We would like this to end. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I don't know if, on behalf of the Planning Commission, to bring this up again. There were thirteen hundred people who opposed it. Would it help to bring fifteen hundred people to oppose it? How many people do we need to say we don't want this in our area? We don't know what's coming in, and so you can't give us those details. So you want us to buy property or stay in this area, not knowing what you're going to do? I stopped the other day at the location we're discussing. I watched little kids get off of a bus. I watched cars backed up for the bus to let them out. I watched men that probably had no business on a golf cart driving. I'm one of those guys. I watched bikers riding both directions. I watched people that moved here and live here because of the peace that they found in that area. I can see, I know when attorneys meet, we have meetings like this, that attorneys and Cooper business are not, they know already what they're going to bring in. They know what they're going to do with that property. They don't spend thousands of dollars making decisions not knowing what they're not going to do. They are not the federal government. We call it the back forties, the back trails. The Waltons have spent thousands, thousands of dollars for wonderful trails that we have and the joy that people have in biking. So what do we want to do? We want to bring in semi-trucks, that's what it's going to take, to deliver their goods. We're going to bring in alcohol so we can have people buying their alcohol there. I don't, if people drink, that's their business. But when you have what this area wants, what you're proposing, what we're going to have is alcohol, little kids, drugs, buses lined up, and difficulties with a place of peace. I hope that you don't approve this, because if you do, one day, I want to tell you this. There will be accidents there, and probably there will be fatalities because you're moving into a direction that brings that traffic into that area, and it was never designed for that. If Cooper had had any brilliance, they would have planned something there many years ago if it needed to be. Not now, not in our lifetime. And when you look at all of these people that are here, they're saying, all but one or two, let's not do this. So I'm asking, on behalf of our community, please stand up for the community. Thank you very much.
Mary Moore, 4 Penny Lane. I had been in this area where this parcel is since 2005. I had the joy of calling it my home, and it has been a wonderful place to live. Our neighbors, we take care of each other, and we support each other. I must say that I am opposed to the rezoning of this to commercial, and I want to reiterate and support all the reasons why the previous speakers have stated. But I want to add to that, that I'm concerned about the effect of if a commercial property goes in there, will it reduce our property values? So that's a concern I have. With retail stores, you always open the door to potential crime, and we certainly don't want that in an area where there is a park where our children play on a daily basis, year-round. So, again, in addition to all of those reasons that have been previously stated, I just finally want to say, it's such a beautiful neighborhood. I've had the joy and the opportunity to call it my home since 2005. Please don't take my home away from me. Thank you. I thank the commission for your time and the opportunity to speak.
I'm Maxine Olson. I live at 6 Carter Circle. I listened as well as I could because there's a lot of creaking in the back of this room, and I don't have the best hearing. I listened as carefully as I could to the attorney who said that this site had met all the requirements to put in a commercial something for the good of the community. I can drive ten minutes from my house. I can have restaurants. I can have shopping. I can have anything I want in ten minutes. I don't see where cutting it down to two minutes is going to make my life or the community's life better. Thank you.
I do want to say, the city attorney did not say that it met the requirements to be commercial. They had met the requirement for notification to the public of the hearing, is what the city attorney had said. He did not advocate one way or the other on this request.
Jason Dickie, 70, Melanie, there in that area. Construction professional, project manager, I'm managing about $180 million worth of work this year, and I think that's sort of my first input on this, is I see no way that even this is rezoned, it's going to go through a traffic plan, utility plan, grading of stormwater. Uh-uh. That property is nothing but a gulch. It's a gully, falls away. I don't, where are you bringing your power in? You're going to have to have egress, two ways on both sides of that corner. You're going to rezone this, and you're going to throw a lot of money down the drain on these plans that are never going to fly. So, I just don't think that property is suited for anything commercial, just because of requirements of commercial property right there. Second is, my wife and I walk past that corner every single morning. We walk in the morning about 4:30, 5:30, and that is a thoroughfare. So I don't see the golfers, I don't see the bikers, but I can tell you that every single morning, there's wildlife moving through that area, and that is one of the sole places that they can cross. So deer and everything else are coming across there. So I know that, you know, hitting deer around here is a concern for everybody, and, you know, I mean, that's where they cross right now, and I don't know where it goes. But I also do know that there's a public enforcement officer at the parks there, up at the park every morning, trying to clock the speeders. And at 4:30, 5:30 in the morning, people are cranking down that road at a good clip. So, and I know that goes on all day long. So, I can't imagine that's going to get any better. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having this meeting. My name is Jose Portet. My residence is 2 Castle 4 Drive. I appreciate what you're doing. I just want to add my voice to this community of residents that want to maintain a residency area where there's no commercial properties. And as the lady just said prior to me, ten minutes away, there's shopping, restaurants, and many, many facilities. This is the second time that the Cooper has tried to change the zoning on this property. I know they are allowed to do it every year, and they can make the change and continue again. Prior to this situation, they only wanted to add a general store there. Now, we don't know. It's all open. As the lawyer has mentioned, we have the facilities, they can put just about anything there, no matter what it is. I know Cooper owns a lot of other properties that they're zoned commercial, and they can utilize those commercially zoned areas for whatever they want to do, because they're privately already commercial. I do not want to add any more time to you guys. I appreciate the opportunity to express myself. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kay Miller. I live at 60 Fairway Drive. I have been visiting Belavista since nineteen, the early 1990s when my mom moved down there. So I've seen a lot of changes over the years, and was excited to buy her property after she passed away. And when she had passed away, and we were like having a Yaroslav, getting rid of some of her things, a lot of people asked, are you selling this property? This is the most beautiful street. It's so quiet. It is so peaceful. People, you know, even from other parts, really appreciated and could immediately see the value of that nice, quiet neighborhood. And I agree with the woman earlier who, I had even written it down, yeah, it's only a ten-minute drive to get down to 71 Corridor and get just about anything you want. So I do believe that having some commercial development there would change the character of the neighborhood and potentially bring down our home values. In my letter, I had also commented on the drainage situation. It's already pretty bad after a bad rainstorm. With a parking lot being paved there and being an impervious surface, it's going to be a lot worse and could potentially flood Houston during a bad rainstorm. The other thing that I want to bring up, though, is just thinking ahead to the future. We just built that greenway. We're really proud of that greenway. It's a great addition to our neighborhood. They're talking about that extension over to Trafalgar. I want you all to think about the fact that if you allow commercial development and they have to cut a driveway through that greenway or whatever, that could potentially damage future partnerships for the very thing that makes Belavista such a, you know, such a valuable area. Those greenways, the back forty trails. So just, you know, think about that and the effect, not just now, but also in the future. I also want to thank you all for, you know, just the process. It's great to live in a democracy where you can hear your voices heard. Thank you.
Barton Fogelman, I live at 3 Melanie Drive. And I'd like to bring up, I agree with all the other people that have spoken, but I'd like to remind the commission of some of the factors that are going to be required to make that site suitable to put any commercial business on. It requires a huge retaining wall across the back. It's a pretty good ravine there. It'll require lots and lots of dump trucks full of soil to come in and make that more of a level site. They'll require a plan to take the drainage underneath all of that to get it out the other side, which probably won't very well handle a large rainfall like we tend to get sometimes. But I also like to mention that I believe in that last hearing, there was a talk about there had to be a variance, because there's really only about one spot that they could put a driveway, and even that required another variance. And it's right behind that blind hill coming from Metfield, and it has to cross the greenway there. And people are talking about bicycles. I see moms pushing babies on that greenway. I see hikers, I see joggers. We don't have sidewalks in Belavista, but we do have that greenway, and it gets a lot of use. And most of that use either originates from Bowling Springs, or it originates from Metfield Park. And this is just over the hill from Metfield Park. During the last discussion, I took a stopwatch and stood where that driveway had to be and timed how long it took cars to get from where I first saw them to where they were at the drive. It's very quick. I would just like to echo what everyone else has said about asking you to deny that lot being commercial. It's just not very well suited for it. But I would like to make this caveat. If for some reason you feel like you do have to make it commercial over all our objections, that you require the developer to, with their money, pay to reroute the greenway around the perimeter of that property, because I can't see any situation where if that driveway's crossing that greenway, as busy as it is, that there won't be a loss of life. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission?
Hi. I'm Gwen Erisman, and I'm at 4 Jade Lane, and I'm just south of the property that we're talking about. And we were very intentional about finding this property, and it is absolutely stunning and gorgeous, and it just breaks my heart that they would put something commercial there. I have all my notes, but everyone has said everything that I wanted to say. I did want to add that this still would fit in the comprehensive plan because it's a guideline and is general, so it might be arbitrary and capricious, is that what was said, for you to put commercial property right there. So I think that's all I have, and I just appreciate you. I think you have a really tough job, so thank you for listening to us today.
Is there anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Just so that everybody in the audience understands our next process, we will give the applicant a chance to come back up and make any final comments that they want to make, and then the Planning Commission will discuss it. As staff has stated before, we don't actually rezone the property. All we do is evaluate it and make a recommendation to the city council, and all the motions that we do are always in the affirmative, so a yes means a yes. that we do are always in the affirmative, so a yes means a yes and a no means a no, so don't be surprised with the process until we've actually casted our final votes and staff has called the roll. So if the applicant will go ahead and come back up to the podium, we will give you a, a couple of minutes to make any final statements that you would like to, sir.
Thank you. I would just like to say that, um, there's, um, a lot of emotion as we saw on display here this evening regarding this application, and, uh, I understand some of their concerns. Again, uh, many of their concerns will be addressed in the development stage. This is not regarding the development. The last application regarding that property did concern development. So there's another opportunity here, uh, for the public to voice its concern and, uh, and state their, their reasons for those concerns. And I understand that, but I also understand that, uh, we've fully complied with all the stated public ordinances and criteria to get approval of this rezone. And, uh, again, we've met the criteria of the twenty forty plan. So I urge you to understand, I mean, I understand that it's a community concern, and I don't belittle anybody, uh, for having those concerns, but I, I do say that we have met the criteria, and I respectfully request that you vote yes and pass it on to city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, um, it is to you, and I'll open the floor for discussion, comments, and questions.
Uh, I have a question. It's probably for staff more than anything, just to clarify. Can you help me understand what the zones are around this area?
Yes.
I should know, but I don't.
It's all right.
And if I can get you to really speak into that microphone well, Mr. Hyatt, so that the people behind you can hear you, I would appreciate it.
Yes, I will speak up. All right, so.
This is an R-two, correct?
Yes, the siding question is R-two, so two-family residential. Uh, the adjoining properties include, uh, R-two to the north, R-three residential districts to the south and west, and P-one to the north and east. Those are all the direct adjacent properties.
Okay, so no commercial around there?
Not touching the property, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank everybody who came and all the people who emailed. I also live on Fairway Drive, so I'm very close to that parcel, and I'm very familiar with it, and also very protective of my neighborhood, as you all are. And yes, that, having done real estate development, that is an incredibly difficult parcel to develop. And a lot of the bigger uses, anything that would require a semi-truck, anything that would require a big parking lot, any of those kinds of commercial uses would not be applicable to that property. And although I know we can't take into account future use, um, I think the greenway is a really great thing that we've got in our community, and having it just down the street from my house is really wonderful. Uh, some of the types of things that I think would be really nice to have there would be something that is accessed mostly by walking or bicycles, such as a small cafe, a bike repair shop, someplace where you can go and sit with your neighbors and have coffee or a soda, and sit in the shade, and just visit with your neighbors. Um, no, a big retail won't work. Any of these other things, um, would just not be appropriate. And, um, I like the neighborhood center idea, which would provide for a neighborhood resource that's appropriate in scale, which is very few of the things that are actually on the C-one list, but there are a couple of things that are on that C-one list. If we don't go to C-one, my concern is we're cutting out those small, appropriate neighborhood resource things. And yes, I do agree with all of the comments of the neighbors as far as neighborhood issues and issues with that parcel. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I agree with what you were saying, uh, except for one thing. If, if it stays residential now, and somebody comes up with an idea of something that might be appropriate, then the zoning could be changed at that time, rather than changing now and leaving it wide open. And I know the comp plan says that that area is, uh, should have some commercial, but just because the comp plan says it doesn't make it law, and it doesn't mean we have to follow it. It seems to me that that area is residential, it's residential all around it, except for the golf area, and it, it just feels, it feels wrong to me to make that commercial at this time.
I, I will remind the audience that I will clear the room, okay? We do need to keep order. I appreciate you all's enthusiasm, but I will clear the room.
This is not one of the properties that was originally something different, and we changed it later on, right?
No, it was always, it was always shown to be reserved property when we, when we passed our, or we adopted our zoning code in our original zoning map, it was shown to be an R-two. It was never specified to be, you know, with, it's interesting, most of the reserved properties we made P-one, but for some reason, this one was, uh, I'm sorry for the feedback, it made, uh, R-two, so it's shown to be residential.
So it has always been R-two?
As long as the city of Bella Vista has existed. Before that, it was just reserved property on the plan.
Great, thank you.
Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot I also wanted to make it clear to people that the proposal that came forward for the Dollar General was a different applicant and a different procedure. That was for a planned zoning district, which is totally different than what we're doing now. This would be a two-step process where there would be a zoning, possibly a zoning change, and then in the future, there would be a large-scale development where all of the concerns as far as noise and lighting and access and drainage and all of those things would be considered at that time. So it's a totally different process than the prior one.
Yes, that is, that is correct. I mean, when we look at zoning, we have to look at anything and everything that's allowed in a C-one, and if an applicant can comply with our ordinances, then that project would be approved, which could be a liquor store, could be a restaurant, could be a convenience store, there's a lot of things that it can be. And if they can prepare a set of plans that meets our ordinances without any variances, then we don't have an option to deny it, and we wouldn't be able to deny it because we didn't think that it was not compatible. Because once we've rezoned it, it's allowed by right if it's on that list. Uh, and so as commissioners, we have to look at that entire list that has a P next to it. We can't pick and choose what we want to approve after we've rezoned this.
I, I just want to thank everyone in the audience for coming up and, uh, making your comments. Uh, like Ms. Lloyd, I also live in that area, so I'm very familiar with that intersection. I go through it multiple times a day. So I understand your concerns. Some of those concerns are the same ones that I have. So I appreciate you taking your ti- time out of your evening to share those with us. Also want to encourage you, challenge you, beg you, and, you know, I don't, I have no shame, uh, that when we do these long-range plans like our twenty forty plan or Master Street Plan, and we're also, uh, in the process or beginning the process of updating our planning code, to come out and give your comments on those plans as well. So when you see an ad in the newspaper, you see something on social media, on the city's website, come out, make your comments known. That's what we use to make decisions, and the more we know about what your desires are, the better decisions we can make for your community and our community.
Any other, uh, questions or comments from commissioners? All righty, with that, can I have, and once again, like I said, this, we just are a recommending body to city council, but ultimately, city council is the one that will make the final decision on this, um, if we do decide to send it on to the city council. Uh, with that, can I get a motion to recommend the city council to rezone, uh, the property at sixteen dash two zero nine five zero dash zero zero from R-two to C-one? So moved. I got a motion from Sedbury.
Second.
Got a second from Dool. Call roll, please.
Farner?
No.
Sedbury?
No.
Portillo?
No.
Dool?
No.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
No. The, uh, the motion is not carried. It will be up to the applicant to get with staff on the next steps. Uh, once again, we do really appreciate everybody coming out. As Commissioner Sedbury said, we will be holding more general public hearing on passing new zoning code for the city of Bella Vista, and we would love for you all to please come out. And I do appreciate everybody following our rules of order and coming up and presenting your, 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 uh, opinions and your thoughts. Those were, uh, very helpful to have. Uh, yes, ma'am?
We are collecting comments presently right now on a website that is linked on our city website. This is being maintained by our consultant, Freeze and Nickel. They are collecting comments in form of writing. You can put a point on a map. You can interact with, uh, other people of the community who are citing things that work for them, things that don't work for them, things that they're wishing to see differently handled when it comes to zoning and development code. So if you'll visit our website and put any sort of comment that you feel would help us, you know, make informed decisions when elected officials are moving forward with changing these codes, please do that, because we are utilizing them. Right now, we have over five hundred comments from the community already, and so every single one of those comments is being looked at and addressed by city staff through this development process. So I implore you to visit that website, send something in writing to city staff or our consultants, so that we can make sure that all of you are heard when we rewrite these codes.
Yeah, I think somebody asked us if we needed fifteen hundred. We'd love to have ten thousand comments. And I, and I mean that. We want to hear from each and every citizen of what you guys want the city of Bella Vista to look like and to develop like as it moves forward, and without your all's feedback, we do not know. Well, thank you all very much. We'll get, we'll get a couple minutes for the room to clear before we finish up our business for tonight, so thanks again.
But I, I appreciate, like, the list of what the optimal plans were and what they were not supposed to be as well. So I think guidance is really great, you know, to the city. Um, yeah, I, I, we would definitely be lucky to have something like this, you know, in our yard. Uh, but I guess, uh, you know, we have code enforcement officers, right? And they'll need pretty clear guidance on when something becomes, or something is not really a polymer and is turned into just a bunch of weeds, right? Uh, will they be trying to, like, police, like invasive species and things like that in these areas? I mean, you know what I mean? I mean, there are just some, when does it become unsightly at, at one point?
And I can answer that, okay? In terms of the, the ordinance that they're proposing, if it's within a landscaped area, in other words, they've got a, a timber, say, a timbered off area in the yard, and it is just allowed to grow, and everything else is maintained, but I don't think there's any policing of what's grown in the area. It's going to be just whatever grows. It can be tall grass, it can be Queen Anne Lakes, it could be daisies, it could be anything, or I guess it could be wildflowers or something, someone plants in there.
So as long as it's in, like, a defined area, it's got order?
Well, there's a, it says, weed, weeds vegetation in excess of ten inches in height shall be exempt from the requirement if, so long as it is within a landscaped area that meets the requirement of subsection B. And so we talk about subsection B, which is the total square footage, five hundred forty square feet, shall be within a well-defined and contained area that they were, shall be kept and maintained free of tall grass and invasive species, shall not consist of native pollinator vegetation, shall not be in a side triangle nor within the right way. So.
The shell and the shell not are in the second part?
What, it, it, it doesn't say what is invasive species.
Well, but if, you know, they're, in a program they're defined. There's, and, and the program defines it. It's not in, it's not in the ordinance, I don't think. I suppose it could be in the ordinance, but there's another handout that was.
Yeah, which is based off current recommendations, and, you know, species is fluctuating recommendations, and that's why it wasn't put in the ordinance, otherwise it wouldn't be updated every time the scientist said this is bad.
Yeah.
But, uh, I mean, it's quite widely, like, you know, the concept of what's invasive and what's not, based off of, uh, recommendations of our local university and the county extension offices.
We need to chat about that, because legally, it's a problem if we, somebody overhears determining what's invasive today, and our ordinance just says it has to be, can't be invasive, so we have to make sure we provide some sort of a definition of that, or how it is determined, if we're wanting to do that. Even if we cross-reference it in this ordinance, and we say invasive species as detailed in an approved list from the mayor or, you know, from, something like that. It could be simple, but we just need to pin that down a bit.
That was in the original, at the, uh, open discussion as well, but we kind of went away with that with this one, but we can kind of work that back in.
So this is our first reading, right? So we may, especially since it's the middle of winter, we, we, not that I'm a planting expert, but, uh, we may have a little time to massage this as we go along.
So, um, I'm sorry, what, where is the violation for, like, for invasive species?
Well, as it's written right now, it's exempt. It's okay to have this tall, ten, more than ten inches, but it shall be kept and maintained free of tall grass and invasive species. So if it hadn't, what was determined to be an invasive species, it couldn't be allowed to be more than ten inches high, even if it was in a landscaped area. So that would be a violation.
It was a penalty, I guess, if we were asking who the penalty is?
Uh, yeah, who, who is, uh, who would be responsible for the determination that it's invasive?
Well, the code, well, you all do that through legislation, determine what's invasive, but it's enforced through code enforcement or police, and it's enforced the way our unsightly sanitary condition ordinance is adopted or is, uh, uh, enforced now.
I think Jason was expressing the concern that invasive might be too vague. We have to make sure we have it nailed down tomorrow.
If I had a plant, if I had a nice planer, it could, it, it could possibly not be invasive.
Could depend on opinions, that's true. You would have loved the way it looks. Could depend on opinions, that's true, you would have loved the way it looks.
I'm pretty sure it would be, in my opinion, it would be.
In support of cuts, would they say that they are making some medical stuff out of it?
Oh, right, you have plenty to work with.
I don't know what it is, but.
At the end of the day, I think it's a good idea, and I don't want to be one of the bits of, ah, cool idea, I'm not like trying to go down that road necessarily. I think it's a good program, I think a lot of people will appreciate it, you know, I think it's going to give them direction to people that are interested in what they should or should not do, what would be the most likely to attract bees and butterflies or whatever, so. And I think that unsightly, it's kind of one of those things, you'll know it when you see it, you know, at least to take a look and maybe investigate a little bit, so.
I do think there's a certain amount of consciousness raising to this whole thing, I mean, it's caused me to think about it a lot more, we have some places we could definitely plant things, I'll go plant something that attracts butterflies, right?
Yeah.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, D is an ordinance amending section 2423, general installation landscaping and care and maintenance practices, the code of ordinance is the city of Bella Vista, to eliminate authorization for placement of decorative stone in city rights of way and for other purposes, I guess this is here as also.
Well, city staff, I just prepared the staff memo for you guys. Our new city staff engineer, Chris Brackett, has been with us for a little over two months now, something that has definitely came to his attention is the way that we do right-of-way permits, the code even allows it right there in writing, stones. He is extremely concerned about this, mostly because right after that, and even in the ordinance that talks about stones, it says so long it does not conflict with the ordinance that's right below it, stormwater drainage. And it's his professional opinion that stones, decorative stones specifically, will always interfere and be, or at some point in time, become an interference to stormwater. Decorative gravel does not pack, it does not stay where it's put, it ends up somewhere else most of the time, and normally, of course, you all know, everything goes downhill, so it normally ends up in the downhill culvert of someone that didn't put it there, which that, of course, that's upsetting because then the person that has that culvert, it is their responsibility to maintain that culvert even though their neighbor's decorative gravel is the one that's filling it. And then, of course, there's city culverts that we have to maintain, the historical city cross culverts that go into the street, those are at the very downhill of everything usually, and so all of that stuff really ends up in our city cross culverts, which of course increase maintenance requirements from our street department. So staff is here to just propose a small adjustment to the current code and remove the word stones, that's really it, and then move the or over a word, so that way we can just proceed with actual landscaping such as vegetation and grass and whatnot. I will note too, the small adjustment would support the development chapters that are later on, but right now, this chapter 24 conflicts with our development chapters 101 through 109, because all throughout our development chapters, it says, do not put rocks or fill or anything like that in the right-of-way unless it's supporting driveway. However, if you just scroll up to chapter 24, it says, well, you can get a permit for it, but then when you scroll down, it says, please don't do this. Our drainage manual doesn't want any kind of rock or stone in our right-of-way drainage swales. The only kind of rock that it really mentions as a possibility is riprap, and that's through extensive review and analysis and approval from the city, and of course, you know, riprap's like the big chunky rock that is made to hold the ground in place, whereas decorative stone obviously does not do that, it rolls with the water. Our drainage manual prefers sod line, which is grass or concrete lined drainage swales, however, grass is the most preferred and most optimal drainage swale of permanent stabilization method. Our grading and alteration section of code prohibits fill in the right-of-way unless it's supporting a driveway, and then, of course, our floodplain code, which is also within the development, defines fill, really as any sand rock dirt, anything of that nature that moves the land upwards, so decorative stone will be included in that, so. Just a small cleanup and really protection of city infrastructure, trying to get the rock away from the city asphalt, because over time, rocks, pedals, things like that, eat away at the asphalt, and that's another item that's increasing staff maintenance over on the street department side. You do have a memo from our city engineer in your hands, and then also, I didn't know if the street department wanted to, oh, our engineer's also here, there's Chris. Chris, did you want to add anything to your memo?
I'm just liking to really understand that ditch that's next to that road is really part of the road. When you look at a road and you see concrete curb and gutter, it kind of makes sense that that's part of the road, well, that ditch is performing that function of that concrete curb and gutter. It's really functions as part of the road, and the city, since you own that road, you really need to be able to maintain that, and I feel that decorative rock is just counter to that mission of maintaining that ditch.
I didn't know if streets wanted to add anything from maintenance side.
We had a lot of in comments, depending on how many lots are above the decorative rocks, you have that silt that comes down and it fills in in between all of those rocks, and then it eliminates the purpose of the ditch once it's leveled out with the roadway, so. We also have some residents who become combative when you tell them their decorative rock needs to be removed so that the drain works properly, and so it would definitely avoid situations of that nature as well.
I would also note too, going through the minutes of the drafting of this ordinance, almost at every meeting, I highlighted the word drainage came up as the biggest concern. The previous mayor and previous city council wanted to create this ordinance to protect right-of-way drainage. Like I said, it comes up every time, like we have to put drainage at the top of our list, or we have to make sure that whatever's being put in the right-of-way doesn't impede drainage, the comments are in there, and so the intent of this ordinance, I believe, will be met with this adjustment to this current ordinance, but after that, I have nothing further to add.
Mayor, I'd just like to add that as we, as the city adds 40 to 50 homes per month, every day more and more water gets pushed from the impervious surface of a home and a driveway to the ditch, so every day moving forward, more water goes to that ditch, causing issues downstream.
This raises an important question, with more water being pushed there, how do we determine the sizing of culverts for new properties? And I've seen it done a number of ways in the new subdivision that was just approved here earlier this year, do they have a schedule for each lot so that when the lot goes in, they know what size culvert needs to go for that lot? I've seen those kinds of schedules on plats, because it's based upon the drainage plan of the engineer that designed it and laid out, and it's based on the compatibility with the ditch depth and character that's there, so you have a schedule, lot one gets this size, lot two gets this size, lot four and 10 gets this size, because they're way downhill, and I don't know how we deal with that. I've observed, I guess, in some areas that we probably have a standard 10 or 12 or 16 inch culvert, where it should be 12 or 20 or 24 or 36 installed to accommodate, so.
I'll tell you that, since I've taken over the GECs, I haven't recommended anything less than 18, because that's what your code requires.
18 is the standard.
18 is your minimum that's required in your drainage manual, RCP, and that's what I have put on every review that required a culvert. Now, if I went out and looked at every site, if the culvert just downstream is a larger culvert, if I can tell there's a lot of area that drains down from it, I've done this a really long time, and I can get pretty close just by telling, but a lot of your ditches aren't graded for that, so they have to grade that ditch to drain. And that's also part of my comments to these people putting these in. And I've had conversations with our inspectors and expressed my concern of how I've seen some of them done, you can tell that they just dug out on both sides and put the culvert in, well, that culvert's just going to silt in to those levels, it's going to be worthless. So you really have to grade that ditch out to drain, you can do it, I mean, it's in the right-of-way, even if you have to grade slightly off your frontage to get it to daylight, you can do that because it's in the right-of-way, that's what that ditch is for, to carry that water.
And just a point of clarification too, just to answer your very, very first question, when we do have new subdivisions that come through, they are designed, the engineer does design them and lay them out, and they'll put them in the general notes, but they're pre-platted, that's kind of what Chris was talking about.
Well, I have a question on that whole stone thing, so this change, any new builds or new houses, you can't have stone in the right-of-way, what about all the people who already have stone in the right-of-way, are we saying, hey, you can't have that anymore?
Well, the current ordinance already reads, it can exist until it impedes stormwater flow, and then it must be removed, so we're not, that would still be enforced because we're not changing that section of code, but that's already there.
As long as it doesn't impede drainage, then yes, it would be permitted to continue to exist, because the prohibition is on installation, so it's already installed, so it would comply with the time.
So it's a matter of whether it's impeding drainage or not?
So I have a ditch down the street from me that was installed before the city was incorporated, and it has a mixture of flat limestone laid in the ditch to make it kind of smooth, but unfortunately, the ditch is higher than the road in that area, so the water doesn't run into it very well, the ditch is not deep enough to handle the flow because it can't get off the road into the ditch, and then it goes into a big 36 or 48 inch culvert, which takes it to the lake, but the water on the road always pools in that corner of the street because the water can't get out of the street to the drainage channel. So I don't know if that's an issue that we administer now and say, you have to fix the problem, folks, I think it's a new owner that lives in the property, so it's not the same owner that actually installed it originally, but the problem is still there. We probably have more than one of those around town.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it is a, it's a pretty popular issue, rock here in the right-of-way, ditches, people like to fill the ditches here, they like to put decorative rocks and fill an 18 inch ditch because they don't want to mow it, so then we have to go in and say, please remove that, and of course, as she's noted, it's not a very friendly and fun conversation. A lot of people don't understand that the ditch is not their property, that it's city property, that it's part of the street, they think their property goes all the way to the asphalt. But yeah, anytime that someone's filled in a ditch, or has altered the stormwater onto the street, or it's affecting the street, it's blocked, that becomes a violation of 24-22, and so the code enforcement could be called for issues like that, regardless of how long it's been there.
So anytime there is a screen or guard to prevent leaves from stopping up the culvert would not be permitted?
A screen?
Or anything to stop the leaves from going into the culvert.
Like?
Jigging wire or something?
Yeah, people put stuff like that.
Yeah, some people put a screen in front of the culvert to try to stop all the garbage from getting in there and clogging it up, and just water get through, hopefully.
We have to create some of those racks to be able to keep some of our local common draining areas that clog and back up and flood homes, we have racks that we actually go out and clear ahead of any type of storm, heavy rainfall, because it will clog up some of those cross culverts as well.
So if the street, I mean, if the ditch belongs to the city, and then you have a culvert that is stopped up with leaves, then who's going to stop that culvert, the city or the property owner?
Well, if the culvert goes to a private house, and it's under the house's driveway, that must be maintained by that property owner, but if it's under the street, it's maintained by us.
If it crosses?
Cross culverts are maintained by the street department, driveway culverts by the resident.
We had culverts cleaned out over, I live a lot by the street department, you know, we have those issues, and they're really good about coming out, when you call and get in touch and let them know too. But I want to say, like, so, I've been sitting here, so, been doing this almost seven years now, right, and the first couple of things I was called out on by residents was exactly this right here, ditches that were filled in with rocks by residents, and it causes downstream problems, it also causes problems across the street, because that water has, it just doesn't go into a ditch, and it doesn't run down, you know, and there's no absorption there, there's a well that kind of like takes care of some of that water. But, yeah, they fill in the ditches, and like I said, they don't have a problem because their yards are sloping like this, and it goes across the street and goes right into the neighbor's yard across the street, and then that just causes more water on the other side of the street, and it just, then it just causes problems downstream from there, so anything we can do to solve some of those problems is a good thing, so.
One of the issues that I've had several calls on is property owners with STRs, let's bring up a bad thing, neighbors have complained where we've allowed them to put in stone parking in the front, they didn't use decorative stone, they used?
SB2.
SB2, but now it becomes an issue of parking, I'll show you some pictures. This is one of them that we apparently approved. This was one that called me over on the east side.
So is that concrete all the way up?
No, that's all stone, that's all stone. Where's that concrete, that one, that was concrete maybe, okay, where's the different one that's got stone on it? There it is, they added all that stone.
Yes, so this same section of code also permits that. Staff did not touch that section of code because it is very popular and it is very highly sought because there's nowhere to park here, in Bella Vista, our right-of-ways are smaller, there's no on-street overnight parking here, so SB2 parking pads along the driveway, a driveway extension is what we call it, if it's not the required, the two parking spaces nine by 19 behind the front and side setback, and it's not the required access drive for the home, then we will defer to this section of code that says you can do that, you can lay for additional parking SB2 so long it is well-defined and contained with a border, and then so long as obviously you get a permit from CBS.
So does that have to be out of the right-of-way and on the private property, or do you allow that adjacent to the pavement as an example, and these here were adjacent to the pavement?
So, previous city staff, historically, they used to permit parallel parking to the street, they would allow SB2 all the way along the frontage, however, their overview of code, that land development ordinance that we mentioned earlier, that this chapter really conflicts with it, says you shall not put fill in the right-of-way unless it's for a driveway, and so current city staff does not allow the entire frontage to be filled with SB2 anymore because of the land development ordinance. We allow driveway extensions for additional parking because of that, however, that other's type of parking where the entire right-of-way or all 100 feet of the frontage is filled with SB2, we find greatly conflicts with the landfill requirement of no fill in the right-of-way, so.
So the parking that you would allow being additional along the driveway would be perpendicular to the street?
Correct.
Not parallel to the street?
Correct.
And that would have a culvert underneath it, obviously?
Yes, so be a culvert.
To allow water flow and things like that, so.
Or turn in on the existing culvert and add the extension once you turn in.
Okay. So, Chris, I'd like to thank you for bringing this up about the decorative stone, to me, this is an example of continuous improvement, the staff notices something wrong with the code and brings it up, comes to the council and says, hey, there's something wrong with the code, here's what it is.
I'm sorry, I mean, I guess maybe it's all considered decorative stone, but it's not just decorative stone, it's any kind of form of stone really, except for the one type, right?
Yes, staff is proposing to remove the word stone entirely, so no more filling the ditches with any kind of stone.
Exactly, right.
Really, like what a lot of people like to do is they will want to fill because they don't, they don't want to traverse a ditch, they'll say, I just want to fill it, I want to fill all 18 inches with decorative rock and just call it good, can't do that, or they'll just try and keep a ditch, but they'll still fill it by like four to six inches and show a ditch line, but a lot of people like to just line the entire ditch line with stones, and that's what we're trying to prevent any future requests of that nature.
Should we put a sunset provision in the ordinance that we're talking about for removal of the decorative stone within the right-of-way at the time of sale, like we have connection to sewer is hinged upon time of sale?
That is something the council could do, but it's beyond, kind of beyond the scope of amending of this particular section, so it's, you're talking about a bigger project.
It would be something in addition probably to what we're talking about right here.
I would suggest it would be a different ordinance would be a better way to approach it, we're not going to allow it to be built, and then now we're going to require each individual property owner to remove it.
On some type of a time schedule.
Got to get a big room for that meeting.
Okay, I guess.
I guess, does that make sense? Anybody? Anybody? Do we need to, we need to think about, we're not allowing any more of them, proposed ordinance that we can talk about.
So how many happen, or does the city require a resident to remove stone right now? I mean, I guess it happens sometimes, right?
It does happen. It's not, I mean, I don't even know between.
They fill, I mean, not just stone, but they fill the ditches with dirt.
Yeah, they will fill it and try to.
Which are in violation right now.
Make it a flat. Yeah, we have to go in there and require it, or a CVO will have to pop in there before we require a CVO. But from the other side, like I don't know how much streets sees it from them, but now that code enforcement's also in another house, too. I'm not sure what the current is, but before, it was a common discussion between planning and code enforcement because planning used to be the overseer of the right-of-way, till we had an engineer review many of these permits. But it's pretty common from us, and I would say Karen probably, too.
Yes, we've had a few residents where when we reached out to them, because code enforcement gives them an opportunity to correct it themselves. And then if they don't go that route, we go out and meet with them and say, hey, this is causing this issue, this needs to be removed. Some people just say, you know, take it all out, do the ditch however you guys need to do to make it correct. We also have residents who don't want us to remove their stone, and very delicately and time-consuming, our guys will use their finesse, try to get the stone back up on the shoulder, do the ditch, and put the stone back in, which is going above and beyond to keep, you know, residents happy with us not tearing out their landscaping is what they consider it.
I will say, too, this will help prohibit a lot of calls, which you may have also gotten a lot of calls, I know our planning commission got a lot of calls, whenever utilities come through and start repairing or improving their utilities in the front. We got a lot of upset calls saying that I just laid a bunch of landscaping down and right in front of the road, and now, you know, Carroll or Cox or AT&amp;T is out there ripping it out. And it's like, well, if you got a permit, you know, you acknowledge that they have every right to do that, that's their area that they can access. And so it'll also help prevent future upset residents from that aspect as well.
Is there any kind of document available to the public that says you need a permit for this and a permit that this is what people need permits for, such as landscaping and so on?
Yeah, I think this is on our FAQ, too, our residential building permit questions. But our ordinance says it online on our immunity code, but then our website should have it on our FAQ. Do I need a permit to do something near the street or something like that?
City Hall has an updated, who do you go to for permits for doing this, that, and the other things? So they've expanded that quite a bit, the one at City Hall now, I've noticed.
And also, the station owner, that explains right-ofways and utility expense and what can and can't happen in those areas.
But most people don't understand what the city owns and what they own. They just don't.
Some people don't want to.
A lot of conversations I have, you don't own to that.
It's pretty hard.
To the end of all.
So is that, is the document identifying those particular things, is that readily available to the public? I mean, is it easy to find? Like some things on the website, it's not exactly easy to find unless you know where you're looking or know where you're going, you've been there before.
Yeah, that's the point. I guess we'd have to define, you know, to locate, but you hit the point right on the head. It may not be easy for others or maybe very, but it is on our FAQ website. We can also, we've also created handouts in the past, too, but they weren't really utilized at CDS, they kind of just sat there and no one ever took them. So they're not there anymore. But that's something we can definitely bring back up again if they'd be utilized.
I'll always say this, if anybody has a question about the city, if they really want to find the answer, they can find it.
There's a lot of people do call.
It's online, phone call, conversation with city council, we were helping find it. But I'm saying, if you want, if there's something, an answer that you want to know, you want to find out, you can find out.
Then you go to Facebook and get 40 answers.
Yeah, that's like the last.
Good knowing they want it.
We get a lot of calls from people that say, I just moved here and I'm wanting to do this, do I need a permit? So I mean, that's always the best way, is just to verify verbally with a city staff member. But yeah, increasing resources allows, it's always great.
Except for in this society of media, if there were anyone right now.
Okay, good conversation.
Thank you, Kelly.
The next one is Resolution E setting the meeting schedule of the Bella Vista City Council for calendar year 2024. We have a proposed schedule, we have the usual Tuesday work sessions in January and February because of the holiday. And most of it tracks with, also, there's a meeting on Tuesday in May, I think, to avoid Memorial Day. And most of it tracks the usual, I did notice in November, we are using the regular dates there, because it's the 18th and the 25th.
I didn't create the key, one is the one that generated the calendar.
This is the one that was approved by planning, or Jason, right?
Yeah.
This is the last.
Yeah, so you folks can look it over and see if, before next week's meetings, if you're happy with everything. It tracks pretty closely with what we normally do.
Except, this is the 13th, we do it for Thanksgiving. Yeah, I'd probably consider moving.
11/25 to 11/18, probably.
Yeah, in the past, in November, we moved that up a week, and this leaves it right where, with the work sessions Monday of Thanksgiving and the meetings the Monday after Thanksgiving, it's like.
On this one here?
Yeah, you can think about that, so.
I can still change it.
Yeah. So, yeah, get word to her before, later in the week, if you.
Who travels on Thanksgiving? Anybody here?
We do, sometimes just want to pass, so. I mean, I like this, you know, sometimes your family is a girl.
Yeah, yeah. It's actually a tough holiday to travel on, but people do it.
Isn't that the same, though, as this year is? Yeah, makes it tight.
Well, this year it's on the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, this year we push everything up a week.
Earlier a week this year. Next year it'll be, it'll overlap the week of Thanksgiving and then the week, Monday after Thanksgiving, that might be a challenge.
Yeah.
Wait a second.
What doesn't?
No, it doesn't.
It's still, it's exactly the same as this year.
Yeah. Because, yeah.
Thanksgiving's late next year or early this year.
28th is Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay. Thanksgiving's 28th, so it's pushed up.
Same layout.
Same layout.
28th, this is the third Monday, it's just the way it falls. So it's not pushed up, but it's still before Thanksgiving.
It's a calendar, normal calendar work with Thanksgiving.
Okay, take back my earlier comment.
There was one thing that came up, I actually had a discussion with you, Cassie, that she said every year we have a planning commission.
It's happening, yeah, good.
It's happening like tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And would it be wise either to move to Tuesday night for this work session or make it an hour later?
Oh, I think it's okay the way it was. I mean, look how many citizens are at our work session. Think I see one.
Well, it would be nice if they attended, like, I wish it nights like tonight, it would have been nice to have heard the discussion going on as a city councilor personally. Like, I'll watch it later, Thanksgiving.
I would suggest that other commissions should defer to the city council's calendar rather than the other way around.
Do they do it on theirs or is it?
They set their calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, the rule of procedure said it to the second Monday of every month, or as just voted on by the chairperson, so we could vote and change it. We would just need to do that right after you guys set your calendar.
We'll have all of next year up until November to decide because.
Yeah.
Well, we have to, we have to publish it on the development calendar almost at the same time as they do, because we're already in cycle one right now.
Submittals are all affected by your calendar.
Yeah, we're already in cycle one.
2024.
Yeah.
So what would that look like?
I'm not so sure it will follow on the same day in November next year.
It may not.
I think.
It does over here.
I think it does.
You think Thanksgiving is the time of?
It's just the timing of the calendar and that.
The second Monday, was that, was 24, the second Monday in November of '24 is the 11th.
Yeah.
And the third is the 18th, and the fourth is the 25th, and Thanksgiving's the 28th.
Yeah.
The 11th will also be Veterans Day.
Oh, so it'll be the?
It'll be a holiday that.
What do you do when it's on the holiday? Move to the next day?
Yeah, we'll have to move it to Tuesday. But again, they will vote to approve that after you set everything.
Good discussion on the calendar. Okay, Resolution F is adapting amendments to City of Bella Vista employee handbook, and Glenda Gelderman is here.
All right, hopefully you all looked at the packet and saw we don't have a lot to change or requests to be changed this time. 2020 was the last year we updated it, just before COVID took over everything. We did a big overhaul then, so we're only looking at a few things. The mayor's welcome, obviously, we needed to update that. What we did this year is we pulled out Peter's welcome and just handed employees the letter from Mayor Glenn. So you've got a copy of that. Vacation and civic rule policies for employees working 30 to 39 hours a week. These are actually considered full-time employees, they are eligible for all of the benefits, including sick and vacation time. Currently, they earn at the same rate as employees who work 40 or more hours a week. What happens is when they take the time off, they only take off, most of these people work 30, not 39 hours. So they're working a 30-hour work week, they want a vacation day, and they only take six hours. So what happens is these people working 30 to 39 hours are piling up all this extra sick and vacation time, because they're crewing at the higher rate, but taking it off at a shorter, you know, six hours instead of eight hours every time they take the day off.
How do we get a 39-hour employee? How does that work?
We really don't have any. We, what we're doing is creating a, we have employees 30 to 39 are considered full-time, but some of their benefits are different. Right now, their sick and vacation are exactly the same. So they're all hourly employees, basically, and they're clocking their hours. What we do is we limit their time in most of the departments to 30 hours because that's what we budget. It gives them a little flexibility to work a few more hours, but employees who work 40 hours typically, but who end up working 45 hours for overtime, don't get extra sick and vacation time. So my thinking is it makes more sense to move these people into their own category, and they would earn 75% of the time that a full-time employee currently earns. Does that all make any sense?
So that's why you're breaking these two?
Yes, we're just, we're pulling those people out and creating a sick and vacation policy just for those people. Okay. One of the things that was talked about a couple of years ago, actually, it was probably right after we did our last handbook update, was creating a catastrophic sick leave bank. And a lot of municipalities have these all across the country, including numerous cities in this area. And if you ask me which ones, I don't remember, because I looked at it so long ago, I don't remember in that area who passed these. But basically, what it does is we would take sick time that an employee would lose because they've maxed out. We've got enough employees at the city who've worked here enough years that at the end of the year, when they hit 480 hours of accumulated sick time, it just gets dumped, it goes nowhere. What we're proposing is that we create a special sick leave bank, use those hours that would be lost by the employee and go into oblivion, and create this bank for people who have a special need. Since I've been here, which is almost five years now, we've had one employee in that for five years that this would have impacted. So it's not going to be used a lot. But what we, what we would do is give somebody maybe with like a long-term illness the opportunity to stay employee by the city, not have to give up their job because they have no income coming in. If you read through that policy, we're not just going to give this time upfront. They would have to use all of their sick time they had accrued, all of their vacation, any comp time that they had. If they get short-term disability insurance, which pays 60% of their regular pay, they would only get that other 40% in this catastrophic sick leave time.
So this is not a program where employees who are working that have accrued sick leave and perhaps exceeding the 420 hours would be one of those where you'd say, okay, take eight hours of my time and transfer it over, where they would do that, and that's what I've seen, is it's funded by the employees that are working as a positive, as a positive acknowledged and recognition of the employees that are helping. In other words.
Okay, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of legalities, there's a lot of legalities in different ways that you can do this. There can be tax implications to the people who give time. There can be prejudices for if somebody donates to a specific person.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this perception of you like them, you don't like me. And we want to avoid all of that kind of thing.
So this takes really the overrun that gets lost every year and puts it into a bank automatically?
Yes.
So it's, we're paying for the sick leave, it doesn't go to waste now, it goes into a fund?
Correct.
So it's not a bank.
And I don't see, like I said, I've been here almost five years, I've only seen one incident where that would have probably been a situation where somebody could have used it, we would limit it.
Somebody out as a horrible, horrible situation.
Yeah. Somebody, and I've worked with people like this in the past. They, you know, they come to work whenever they can, and they put in their time whenever they can, but they end up running into a situation where, you know, they kind of get forced to quit because they can't afford to keep coming to work. They're almost making themselves sicker by trying to come to work just because they don't have the time to take off, so. We would limit it, no one employee can get more than 480 hours in their lifetime at the city. We would limit the amount that goes into it. I don't remember what I put in there.
So 480 hours is a little less than one-fourth of a year.
Right, it lines up with family medical leave.
Yeah, it's about three months, yeah.
Brenda, I don't know that we talked about this, but, and it's more of a financial question, I'm just thinking about it, but in terms of budgeting that, because you may have someone at a certain pay level need to leave, but someone at a higher or lower pay level have the extra leave time, is that a consideration in terms of how we budget that? Is there going to be paid at whatever rate they're earning when they're taking that leave?
Right.
But the donated hour may not be the same value.
Right, I understand what you're saying. That's part of why you kind of create this general mysterious pool. That's where some of the tax implications come in. Because really, when they're using this and getting this time, it's replacing their other income anyway, so it's kind of budgeted for, in reality.
Well, that's true, normally they're in the budget, they're.
Yeah, maybe they're working every day.
So the contribution would be at the current rate of the employee, and then the withdrawal would be at the rate of the employee using it?
It's, you know, be hours rather than a dollar amount that sits in that pool.
I was just talking to the city budget.
Yeah.
You had to budget the time that the.
So you end up with a pool of money, actually, not of hours, you end up with a pool of money then?
Well, no.
No, it's a pool of time.
It's a pool of time and.
You don't know what the.
It really, probably, no, I shouldn't have brought it up because we budget for them to work all year. So if they're not working, there's still money there to pay them, it's just they're going to be allowed to receive that money without working for a period of time based on the catastrophic.
So really, you're losing the production.
Yeah, you're losing productivity, you're not losing money.
But you're not paying any more than you would have.
So, sorry.
If you have more questions, I'd happily answer more later, too, if you think of anything after tonight. And the next one is family medical leave. We're not changing a lot about it, we also are not doing anything illegal, so don't get worried about that. Right now, our family medical leave is very generous in the way it allows people to use their sick time, particularly the parent who has not had the child, AKA the father. So right now, when an employee's spouse has a baby, our family medical leave allows the male or the female to use a full 12 weeks of sick time and take off 12 weeks of sick time, which they're getting paid for if they have that much accumulated in their sick leave bank. Most places do not allow you to use your sick time during the entire 12 weeks if you have not had a child. you have not had a child. You can take the time. You don't have to pay anybody while they're on family medical leave. That is not part of the law. The law says we need to give them the time off. We will continue to give them the option to take the time off. But we want to limit the use of sick time so that, let me look at my notes and see if I can boil it down. So I'll jump back to this minute. Family medical leave says you can take twelve weeks of time off, the father or the mother, anytime during the first twelve months after baby's born. So they don't even have to take it right away if they don't want.
Do they have to take it continuous?
They don't have to take it continuous. We find that most people do. We want to change it so that the employee who gives birth, we'll just state it that way, the mother, gets either six or eight weeks of sick time. Because when you have a baby, the doctor gives you a doctor's note that says you're ill basically for six or eight weeks. Six in a normal pregnancy and birth, eight weeks typically due to C-section. We would allow the mother to take the six or eight weeks as sick time, and then the remainder of the twelve weeks for FMLA could be taken as bonding time. So in essence, they can use sick time for the remainder of that time as well.
So the first part would be for a birth mother, not just a mother, but a birth mother? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll get into a little bit more details about this in a second. So employee has a baby, she gets six or eight weeks off as sick time because she has a doctor's note. She gets to take the rest of the twelve weeks as bonding time, which she can also use sick time for. So essentially, the mother can take twelve weeks of sick time. Fathers currently also get to use twelve weeks of sick time if they want. We want to limit that so that the fathers would use six weeks of sick time rather than twelve. And if they wanted to take another six weeks off, they would use vacation time or go unpaid.
Correct.
Okay? And we would use the same, we would use the same thing for adoption. If someone adopts someone, or adopts a child, they could use six weeks of sick time, and then the rest of the time they could take as vacation or unpaid time.
So what about the mother in that case? Or is it both mother and?
Same thing, she did not get birth in that case.
Okay, so they would give.
So she doesn't have the sick time with the doctor's note.
We can't have a different policy for adoption versus natural birth.
I guess I wonder, what was the issue if they had the sick time banked, of them not being able to utilize it during the?
For the fathers?
For, for anybody, the, the, the non-birth parent, yeah. The non-birthing parent. Or, or an adoption case, like?
Okay, so.
If you have the time.
Good questions. It's just not typical that somebody would get to use sick time for the whole time. They could take the time off again.
So they're not denied the time off?
They're not denied the time off, right.
How the time off is compensated for?
Where we run into these issues is we've got shift employees, and with some of our shifts, and I'm just going to use our fire department, they can be gone a very long time when you're looking at how many shifts off they get. And that's a real, that puts a real stress on his department when these people have babies and they take twelve weeks off. I think, didn't you have one that waited a while to take time off? And then he basically took time, because you can take it anytime the first twelve months, right? Took time off, and it was maybe six months later after the birth, and he posted all over the internet their family was at the beach. And then, when he came back, he quit. So essentially, he got, you know, the twelve weeks of sick time, six months after the baby was born, part of it on the beach. So I guess it's to discourage people from always taking twelve weeks off to take a vacation, if that makes sense. We're not, we're not going to say somebody can't take the twelve weeks. We're just limiting it to.
Six weeks of vacation.
Six weeks.
Six weeks of sick time.
Of sick, six, eight. And in, in the case of the mother who gave birth, in, in the instance she gave birth, she technically has a sick leave note from her doctor for six weeks, and then she has the other six weeks of bonding time after that. I'm seeing Jason's face as unhappy.
No, not unhappy, it's just I think we're, we're digging into the weeds more than we probably need to because we're going to end up accidentally mistating something in a very touchy area of law. That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, and like I said, I'm not.
Listen, you haven't said anything.
I'm not trying to.
We're going to keep digging until we get ourselves in mass, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to eliminate the twelve weeks that people can take off. I'm just trying to change how we pay them while they're off, I guess.
Why don't you explain to me about the traumatic event counseling?
Okay, so this is not an optional thing. This is something that the state of Arkansas decided to do for fire and police. Effective January one, twenty twenty-four, we are going to be required to provide and pay for twelve sessions of counseling for any police or fire department employee who experienced traumatic event, which can be extraordinary traumatic bodily injury, the death of any person, serious injury, death, abuse, or exploitation of a minor. This is all while they're working, obviously. Eminent threat to life of the individual or another person they're working with, or a mass casualty event. Obviously, everybody's very supportive of this, and one of the key things is they have to be a licensed mental health professional who specializes in trauma and crisis. So the employee can choose where they want to seek counseling. They go up and meet that qualifier that I just stated when they go to the counseling. And that's just something the city will pick up. They can use their health insurance first. We can pick up whatever the remainder is of their bill after that. And it's every year, twelve sessions, whenever something like this happens.
So twelve, twelve sessions per year?
Yes.
So if an employee had two, two events per year that were traumatic, then maybe they still.
It's just twelve a year.
So would that be something that the city would want, maybe want to contract with a particular professional?
They can pick their own counselor.
Yes. We can't tell them where they have to go.
I mean, but would this, would the city want to contract with someone that's saying this is something you can go to, you don't have to, for whatever expense savings they're not?
We can help, we can help them find someone. Yes.
Would that be something a health purveyor would identify with and say, okay, these are, these are folks that fit into that category for our funding?
One of the things we're doing this year is we're going to get a remote, more robust employee assistance program, and the new company is looking into whether or not they can be a resource force for this purpose. They've got to check some things with the state first, but certainly, it would be at least a place to start whenever something like this happens. And certainly, you know, if there's some mass event, we would certainly probably bring some people in anyway, try and get people through that.
Are E and T workers considered fire, are they, is it all the same here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, any public safety employees, basically. And then one thing that Chief Graves brought up that I had forgotten to include in this packet was he had come to the mayor and I and had made a request that we allow employees who can accumulate comp time instead of taking overtime, they can accumulate comp time. Right now, we have employees get paid out at the end of the year, and they can't carry over any of that comp time. The request has been made is can we allow those people to carry up to a week of that comp time into next year, to use next year? So that, sorry, I didn't have that in the packet, but that was one other thing I forgot.
Why wouldn't we not want to? It would, it could impact you in terms of any pay adjustments that are effective at the first of the year?
Well, that is true, if they carry it over, they would be paid at the current rate.
Yeah, yeah, oftentimes it'd be a little bit higher if you carry a week over. We thought of that, but we still thought.
Yeah, and we don't have a ton of comp time, honestly. But right now, we're basically forcing people at the end of the year. They're already getting their holiday pay. Most of those people are in that category. They get their holiday pay, and now we're saying, and now you have to have your comp check at the same time as well. So it would just be a matter of rolling that over. Again, I don't, I mean, you probably know as well as I do, we don't have a, a ton of accumulation.
A lot of times what happens is you have a lot of employees, at the end of the year, it's very hard for, for police, and I believe fires as well, to, to take all of our allotted vacation and comp time. We actually, we actually lose a lot of people, like I'll probably lose some vacation this year just because I can't get it all in because everything piles up, and then it's so busy at the end of the year, you just can't, you just can't get it all in. So the, the comp time, and some employees, they, they do want to take the comp time and not get paid for it, but they'll get paid for it, so they don't lose it necessarily, but we, we want to be able to push some of that into the next year or so when things settle down at the beginning of the year, and things aren't so crazy with the holidays, they could, they could take some of that comp time as, as time off as opposed to just getting paid for it. So that's all we want.
Would you require that to be used up by the end of January, early end of February, or something like that, a timeframe?
You could, but I would hate for you to require it to be used up in a certain time because again, I mean, with, with shift-worked employees, it's very hard. You have to cover shifts, and so you have training, you have sick, people get sick, you have things that happen, so we just want that flexibility for them to carry that into the following year. I think we just want them to carry, what did we say, just a week's worth?
Just a week, yeah. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't perpetually get higher and higher every year. It's just that.
So you'd carry it over at the same rate that you earned it at, or at the current rate?
Well, I mean, just like comp time, if they earn it in January, and they don't, they don't use it till December, but they get promoted in the middle of the year, we pay them at whatever their current rate is. So just, it just depends. So like, like the mayor mentioned, I mean, if, if they got a three percent raise between December and January, they'd get paid three percent more, but it's really not a lot when you talk about forty hours.
And I think we see it as that they'll probably end up being able to take the time off as well as, it won't all be paid out in cash, I'm sure.
Well, my, my, my reason for that question, Chief, was, is that if you push it too long, then you don't use up the time you've accrued the next year.
Right.
That you've passed this week over on. So now you, instead of having four weeks, you've got five weeks, and then you have another.
Yeah, some of you just couldn't use it till the end of the year, they just get paid out a portion. They've never been able to carry more than a week's worth over, so it would never get to where they piled up two hundred hours and then they wanted to cash it all out. It wouldn't be.
They end up getting paid for the new time that they've accrued, or they get a, a week to carry over.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, is, you know, you're talking about a week, right? And just, I just, for, for, if I think we would find, if you went out and researched it, in the vendor world, which is where I kind of came from, we were allowed to carry over like a week of vacation. Now, we did have to use it by the end of the first quarter. You know, you just might want to state that you've got, this is, this is the time when you have to use it by, that's all. Maybe it's the end of the year, maybe you allow a whole year here to use that week, but it's not an uncommon thing to do that. Ours is a little bit different. Ours run comp time and was vacation time, you could carry over, but anyway. I don't see this, I don't see this.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready to talk about our exciting discussion items. The first one is city. Oh, yes, we have one more, thanks for reminding me. Yeah, we have one that didn't make the schedule.
Oh, no, I can do it.
It is the, the clip, the clip one. Okay.
I can't find mine. Is this it? Okay. So it's a, the contract was pure idle in the amount of forty thousand nine hundred and eighty for the purchase of one twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Silverado, fifteen hundred truck produced by CDS. And, you know, there wasn't any municipal bidding this year. Doug, did you want to say anything about this?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Right now, we have nine employees using, we have five trucks, but four working. Karen has one that stays at her place quite a bit, so we're trying to replace an older Canyon, Dodge Canyon, and so that would give us five vehicles amongst nine people. So I've got two quotes from the same places, the Chevy that we purchased earlier in the year, and they actually quoted me the same price. So they give me the same price as what we paid many months ago for the same truck. So I thought that was a good deal.
Okay. This isn't the budget, this is a add-on?
No, it's a budget. It is a budget.
Yeah.
It's our price. It is a little bit more pricing than someone walking in off the street would get, but I did notice, I read today that the POA just purchased a new Ford bottom of the line for fifty grand, so I thought forty was pretty.
So that was an item that happened.
That'll be added to the regular.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda next week. Okay, so discussion items, first one is city purchased of the property at Commonwealth in Houston for a park, and that's by council member Snow.
Welcome, we heard tonight, there's a lot of objections in the zoning for commercial. That's the perfect location for a small park, resting area for people on the trail, the greenway, a lot of traffic, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic in that particular area. Got another park right up the street thing, the Metfield Park, but entirely two different parks, nor has people stopping for resting, visiting, whatever in that particular area. I don't have any idea if I had, I had discussed with Cooper representatives about selling it to the, about the city buying it, and never heard anything from it, but see, they got a representative back there tonight, they might have something to say. Maybe they don't, maybe they already got a buyer, maybe they don't want to sell it to the city.
You know, I, I know you had a discussion with, with Mr. Ruzor, and we, I, I don't think it's been priced. It's not actively marketed. So, you know, I, I think we're wide open on that. We don't have another buyer because we haven't marketed it yet, so that, that's all I know about that situation. I have no idea what the price might be, or that'd have to be determined.
Well, did any of your planning committees decide that tonight?
I got one vote.
One vote in favor, the rest against?
Yes.
I think that is one of five, somebody was missing, weren't they?
For clarification, I was going to ask if that was the same parcel that was being considered by planning committee?
I get a, I get a, I'm a little, let me just lay it out here, I don't think we're going to be surprised. We've got a piece of property that's seeking a rezoning, and now it's, we want to park in it. If we can exercise eminent domain and pay fair market value for that lot, and eventually have a jury tell us what we would have to pay for it, we can operate city parks. We haven't done that before. That doesn't include the cost of maintenance and, and all the things that come with a park and equipping the park or whatever would be involved. It could just be a piece of property and not necessarily have to have anything on it. I'm a little concerned that it just basically looks like we're going to take it so they can't rezonate. I was going to be honest. I think it's, I think it's what it is. So we can take it, use a park, and make, and make a park and, and pay for it, but I don't know what door that opens in terms of, is it a legitimate use of eminent domain? I would argue that it is, if we honestly want a park. Do we honestly want a park? I'm just going to lay, I, I, those are my concerns. It's up to you all whether you can do it, you can have a park, but it could be a Pandora's box.
I don't know if a park would be the, would be the right, the right place for it. Maybe it just center green space.
Either way, same concept.
Whether it's called a park or not a park, if it's owned by the city, it's, it's open public land.
And every time someone wants to zone something they don't like, they're going to want the city to buy the lot so it can't be developed. That's something you're practically going to face, I'm afraid.
Yeah. Yeah. Me, well, I'd like to wait and let the city council people worry, I guess.
The reality is, we have, we have, the POA has significant park space just adjacent to this, along to the west, which is the Metfield Park area. You've got the Metfield site where the old clubhouse was, that's kind of open space. I don't know.
At this point, I think it's just too early to consider anything like that. There, there's, you know, like I said, there's, I don't say ample, but there's a lot of park space developments that exist right now. You know, it has equipment on it and everything else. We don't know at this particular point if it's going to come to the city council or not, you know, via appeal. So, I, right now, I just don't think it's approved or going to make.
I think one of the negative sides of trying to look at parkland for the city is that we have no approved comprehensive plan that includes parkland. Whereas our 2040 plan doesn't look at parkland as being, specifically, we need parkland here, we need parkland there. It's a kind of maybe a general statement in the document, but it lacks detail and it lacks some substance to it like other things that are in there. And so, we would not be able to get any funding from any source because it's not in our comp plan. We can amend the comp plan to add parkland, but it's not in there now, and so, we're not eligible for any, any federal, federal funds for parkland.
There's not going to be any federal money for this. This is something we would have to write a check for.
Well, parkland, parkland itself, there are, there are monies out there for doing that.
I, I don't, and Mr. Roseclose is not going to say anything, I'm not asking him, and I don't want him to.
No.
But they've got, they've got business plans on, at some level, on something all over the place. And, and my concern is, please let me, this is, if, if there is something in, in development, which we can't talk about in terms of the zoning, but now we want to take the property and there, there may be there's some existing contracts in place, we could end up having to pay millions of dollars for that green space, and we would be stuck paying it because we would have already taken it if we exercised eminent domain. So, I, I, I think I'm hearing that properly. It's not the case, but we don't know that, and I'm, they have no obligation to tell us that. And so, I guess I would just, saying on a cautionary tone, you can, you can, you could do it. You could make it be a park. What I can't tell you is whether or not you would just pay appraised value for it, or what all that business losses might be incurred with that. There would be a big question mark about that in my mind, in terms of being able to counsel you on the cost.
My only point, Jason, is that to get funding for it, it has to be in our plan, it has to be in our master plan.
Well, I leave that to you.
Without being detailed, but it needs to say, well, we need a park over in this area here, or we need a park over here, and now we come in and propose a park within that boundary.
In our comprehensive plan, calls for that to be a commercial area, in fact. But, I have a question for Taylor, and she wants to say something, I can see. Would it have to be rezoned if you want to have municipal park facilities on it?
Since it's R2 right now?
I believe parks are allowed in every single zone.
Is that a big government use?
Yeah. But I will note too, our, our current comp plan does have parks called out in our future land use plan for specific parks. Yes, it does.
But number one, I would not advocate for him to donate.
Well, they voluntarily want to sell it to us, that's a whole, yeah, that eliminates the water fights.
That would be the only, that would be the only, I would, people suggest is that if it was voluntary. There you go, you got it now.
Well, what I was struck by is there's already a park right there that POA has. If it was going to be a park, it'd be more logical, the POA owning than us. But, it's kind of funny how different things stuff tail that appear to be completely unrelated. So, we gave you a budget a few weeks ago. It was my first time as mayor, and the expenses were more in the revenue, and we can't have that. So, we just absolutely killed ourselves, killed ourselves, and took $668,000 out of the expenses. And that's not counting, the street department is getting about 200 grand less because of what she took out of her budget. So, that makes it more like 868,000. So, I just spent the last few weeks absolutely killing ourselves. The ink's not even dry, and I have council people coming up saying, hey, let's spend money and buy a park we don't need. I don't think you guys even had a chance to read this yet.
Well, we haven't seen it.
So, it's, you know, it's, it's just, I get it, people thought, hey, it could be a park, then it can't be rezoned and, or it won't be used for something else. We can't make a park every time somebody's afraid of a piece of property. We have little parks all over the city. You know, we have a park on Buckstone right now because people are complaining about that, so.
Something wrong with that? Parks all over the city?
Money-wise, there is, yeah. So, anyway, I, I, I don't criticize anybody for bringing up anything. That's what we're supposed to do, but I just thought that it, it was ironic, so. So, let's see, the next item is consideration of a future lighting ordinance, and that's Councilmember Hansel.
Yep. My old whipping horse, Gordon Hollow Road. I know we're not Missouri, but I don't know if any of you guys traverse Gordon Hollow at dark and see the Great Northern Light that occupies the storage unit. You know, I'm, I'm putting together a proposal, working with Taylor. Taylor, what is the current lighting ordinance for the city?
We currently have nothing in place.
It's not to control anybody's ability to light their property or not light it or whatever. I'm not going to go all dark sky or anything like that. Try to strike a happy medium. We've been reading through ordinances that are in place. Bentonville, Fort Smith, Fayetteville, Springdale, and just trying to get a feel. I can get you guys information or possibly tailor the information that we've been reading through. But, you know, basically, if, to get a compare and contrast, if you drive by Wood Motor at 10 o'clock, it's all down lighting. You really, I mean, unless you're driving by and looking up, you're not going to really see the lights. Conversely, if you look to the left side to that storage unit, and it is blinding, and that's, that's the only thing, I think, that, I think as a city moving forward, we need to be cognitive of what we're leaving ourselves open to as far as interpretation of lighting.
You've got more than brand-new storage?
Yes. Yeah, and then the other one that's down, that's on the backside of Hancock, veterinarian clinic. I literally, when I go to work, when I cross the, drive through the crosswalk, the, the lighting crosswalk on Gordon Hollow, if I look due north, I can see the one, there's a house directly across the street that I thought was just like, like farm implements storage area. I knew there was a house back there, but I really, it is so wooden. But now, every morning, I see the whole front of that house, everything. That would drive me insane. But, that being said, but, you know, kind of along the lines of all the rezones that we've had this, throughout this year, to commercial property. You know, I'm not saying that we, as a city, need to clamp down and make sure everybody's standing in line, but I think we can find common ground, uniformity, lighting ordinance that would at least have something more than nothing. I, I think it would be a good idea just to at least get some kind of commercial design standards rolling, put in place, yes.
You mean just commercial?
Don't we have?
Well, it'll apply to commercial and residential, sir.
Don't we have a site lighting now that requires full cutoff fixtures?
Site lighting?
Open with you a lot of, you said, our code requires full cutoff on lighting fixtures on a property.
Are we...
House itself?
Uh-huh.
Are you talking about on the house itself?
I'm talking about any exterior lighting needs to be full cutoff, which, which, in translating it, there's a, there's a horizontal dimension that you can have the head raised, but it has to present downward.
Yeah.
It can't be like this.
Right.
Shooting light at that wall. But it's, that's called a full cutoff fixture lighting standard, and there's a lot of those out. If you want some stuff, I'll send you some standard stuff.
Well, that's, I mean, we're sort of digging through information, but that, and that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not going to propose anything that is, like, just restrictive. Like, you can't have this or whatever, just some kind of screen directional lighting.
It's, it's not restrictive in the sense that what it, what it does is it limits the lighting so that you can't have lighting on your property that illuminates your neighbor. That's one part of the cutoff fixture thing. But it also says that the head has to be within, I think, 15 degrees of horizontal so that the light that comes down cannot go, can't be like this.
Yeah, in some communities, they restrict like blue lights, or the, you know, the blue light.
Nothing to do with color, it has to do with orientation of what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we can get crazy, but maybe not just...
One of the biggest debates we've had over the years, and I don't know where we are on this now, but it's about streetlights. And people that, that get the Carroll Electric outdoor light that, for their property because they're concerned about safety and it's dark, and then the neighbor that does not want to see that light because it's shining through their window. And then there are the folks that want their intersection lit up with a streetlight because of, back in the day, before there was a city, many of them were installed on these intersections. And when the city came into being, there wasn't really a desire to create more streetlights. And I don't, we had, at some point, I don't know if Mayor Christie or Mayor Anderson decided, this is what I'm doing, I'm not adding more streetlights, or I am, I'm not sure what the policy is. And so much of the complaining has been about streetlights more than it's been about a parking lot light. And so, I think we'll have to be very clear to make sure we're talking, what we're talking about with people, because it will, and as many people are as really strong in the idea, I don't want any light, there are that many that say, I do want light.
And I'm, and I'm of that mindset also. I mean, that's, I like my dark.
It could get a little more touchy than what you might...
And I understand, that's why I wanted to have a discussion before just throwing ordinance at everybody and everybody having to try to hash it out in a week and...
Well, we have two things with streetlights, is a bunch of streetlights the city pays for, it's a pretty significant bill. And a lot of it is, well, a lot of it obviously came up before my time, but some people bring it up, hey, we need a straight light here for safety, having to do with the visibility of the intersection or whatever, and a lot of it is school bus stops. Hey, we got little kids out here, we need a streetlight. And that's where a lot of it came from. Then there's the second thing where people can pay for one at their house. And obviously, if people are doing that, they must want it, and sometimes their neighbor, when we had this session the other week, Linda Lloyd brought up that you shouldn't be allowed to do that, you shouldn't be allowed to have a streetlight. I found that to be a rather radical position.
Well, you know, Carroll now, any streetlights that you install, they're downlights.
They are.
Yeah, they are, but they are downlights. So, our neighbor, let me straighten up with you, our neighbor, my neighbor Jo, she passed away, right, '93, she paid for the light. Kind of sits up in front of our house across the street for 16 years practically since I've been here. The family turned off the electric, right, and that light went away. My wife actually, she liked it, she really wanted to have it there because it's dark. I mean, it's black and dark, right? I said, okay, we'll, we'll put one back, right? So, I called them up, paid 50 bucks, I put one in, we pay out, it's 10 bucks a month or something. But it is much less intrusive than the prior light that was there.
With city, by state law, with city funds, yes, well, it's a downlight. It's a, it's an LED, it's much less bright as the one that was there before.
Might have had a cokerhead before, which is...
My house was lit up with this new one, I don't know. It's awful.
By state law, we cannot use public funds for lighting that's not shielded when it's outdoor, so we have, if it's a streetlight that we pay for, it has to be directed down. It can't be one of these that clears out.
It has to be a full cutoff.
And, and most cities have regulations on their development that would prohibit parking lots from having that same, the very same thing.
But we don't have any regulations right now, I guess.
Taylor, tell us about this.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, just to clarify, this discussion about a lighting ordinance would be a development land ordinance regarding the private property that's being developed. So, like the parking lots, the lights that are on the exterior side of the building, things like that, it wouldn't really address, it's not street public lighting, this is for development. It's typically what the land ordinance is oversee for that specifically.
But that should still require the full cutoff fixture style of lighting though.
Yeah, down lighting is a very popular number one requirement, yeah.
I don't know, I advocate for streetlights.
I'm just, I bring it up, I bring it, what I brought up is because they're just, we, we have confusion in town about that stuff, and I, it's not intended, and it's just one of those things that'll take off before we know it.
Your proposal created a possibility, a neighbor wanted to put up a light at their own street corner wherever it might be. So, and the neighbor across the street don't want it, how do you?
I've kind of struggled with that because that's almost one of those majority rules things, but, I mean, on that, on the one hand. But on the other hand, if somebody feels like their safety's, you know, if they're, they feel at risk for something, I don't know, that's a, that's why I wanted to have a discussion. You know, I, I just wanted some feedback and thoughts from you guys as far as what, because I thought of that very same thing.
It's like, you're going to have to have some kind of approval process from those around it.
That's, not necessarily, no.
Tell, tell him something, if you did.
Oh, I was just going to add too, just as a reminder, this would be a development ordinance, so it would need a recommendation in a public hearing from the planning commission before it came to you guys.
That's what I want to do, Taylor, if they want to regulate streetlights, and what we're talking about, that, that could be outside of development.
Oh, well, that's... Yeah, I'm sorry, the parking lots and exterior, that's...
Craig's got a good point about commercial. I mean, if some people just light up the world and other, other stone, I mean, that is...
Well, and that's, that's kind of, you know, like what they were talking about, you know, over next door, you know, earlier. You know, if, if a retail space comes into a neighborhood like that, I mean, we're in a, we're positioned as a, as a city right now to where we really don't have any kind of guidance that they have to go, or guidance, regulations or structure.
Exterior lighting on the side.
So, so they could put, you know, spotlights all the way around that thing, and there's nothing that, I mean, other than complaint driven, there's nothing that we can do as a city to, to guide that.
Well, what's, you're talking, but this, this discussion here is about street lighting itself, not necessarily...
That's, I'm, I'm having that...
It's a full gamut of lighting issues.
Yeah, it's worth looking at. I'd say, I'd just encourage you to put something together, because we could bat this around all night long.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I mean, so there is, I'm going to go, there's a house, I'll discuss it on golf course, I'm going to give an address or anything, but I know the people that live next door, and there's a person that slept alone a lot, and they put in a light that was like the sun.
Surface of the sun.
I mean, you drive by on Scottsdale, you can't help but go, I am, you know? So, a light, I think, would be appropriate for the house, but how they put it in is like, if, if they could direct it down, it would probably do the same thing. It would be a lot less distracting to the neighbors.
And some communities, they have, you know, like, security lighting, it has to, you can't have it on a timer for longer than 12 minutes. So, it could be a projected light, a security light, you know, activated, but it has to be on a timer, which, you know, seems fair. You know, I mean, it, it's reasonable. I mean, there, there's a lot of stuff that I've read that, that's very reasonable, that could be neighbor friendly. And that's, that's, I just wanted to get y'all's kind of thoughts as far as, you know, seeing something come up next month, you know, just kind of, you know, and then... seeing something come up next month, you know, just kind of, you know, and then, you know, we can email the information that Taylor and I have talked about, and we'll get it out there to you and just kick it around.
Yeah, if you guys could work on something, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, I mean, we've already got stuff, we've already had discussions.
What, what's the car break-in, uh, activity like now?
That, it's, it's what it's always been, it's pretty standard, I mean, you get about maybe fifty or sixty a year.
So we don't have any idea if it's, majority occur in dark areas or well light?
I would say yes, because the majority of Bellavista is dark areas. I mean, you know, so, you know, we, we get caught on streetlights all the time about, you know, the, the Mayor, Mayor Christie and Mayor Flynn, I'm sure will do about the same, but when they get a request for a streetlight, uh, they'll usually send me out, and, and I'll determine, you know, if there's a safety issue, if there's a school bus stop there, if there's a safety issue. But remember, if we put them up with their school buses this year, maybe in two years, those kids are all grown up, there's no more school buses, and so, then we own that light kind of thing as a city, so.
Well, we don't own them, we lease them from the, from the electric company, so they're...
We pay the light bill on them.
Yeah, yeah, they're leased, they're leased, they're sure.
So, so that's kind of how we handle the streetlight situation now, and, and if we determine it's not a safe, it's, uh, the... You can always say safety, but it's not, if it's not a substantial safety issue, then the residents will have to pay for it themselves if they want it, so.
We like ours.
Yeah, it's a good topic.
There's a, this is one of those things, there's two sides to the conversation.
Yeah.
And you gotta try to find some common.
Yeah, and, and that's all I'm looking for, is to something, kind of meet something in the middle where, you know, and I, and I get the whole, that was one of the things that when we moved here, I mean, we could see out our backyard into the stars wherever, I mean, and that, and it's great, but, you know, but I, I get it too.
A lot of people live here alone.
Yeah, and I understand that, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not beating the drum if either one, so.
Okay, well, thanks, that's a good topic to bring up. Okay, next one is updated draft budget for twenty twenty-four. Has anybody received that?
Not that I know of.
That's it, well, I'll make sure you get it before the meeting, so. You haven't said you'd all received it.
Oh, I did. She sent them late, I think.
Oh, did you?
When did she send that? I just didn't bring it out, she sent it out, uh, before the last meeting?
She sent it out today.
No, I just got it today.
Yeah, anyway, this is a second draft from the other one, this one's dated eleven-seven discussion draft. And basically, we got it to the point where revenues are more than expenses. We cut down the expenses by, as I mentioned, by six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and took a couple hundred grand off the streets also. And, uh, uh, there's still some moving parts to it because things are coming in. We had, uh, some numbers coming in still from HR, you know, on what the...
I knew I was getting late.
Yeah, it's been a while, so. Uh, so we do have some, uh, moving targets here, but, uh, I'll make sure this gets out to everybody. And it's, uh, uh, this is still the discussion stage. We had a proposed date at December four to have a special meeting, and you can look at your calendars if there's a date around, it might be better, you know, a day or two, right around that time, we were thinking. And we were thinking that budget would be approved at the December meeting, that's what we're hoping for schedule-wise. You know, legally, it has to be by what, the end of January or something? But it makes sense to have it approved before the year starts.
That, well, that creates all sorts of issues with rates of pay and, uh...
Yeah.
Everything because...
Sure.
It really needs to be before the beginning.
It's due by Monday, December the fourth.
Okay, because I would ask them to, to fit in with the year, so.
Yeah.
Me, that's my whole, okay.
Well, it's not on, not on December fifth, because that's Saint Nick's month.
Yeah, but that's a work session type of meeting, you know, just to talk about the budgets more. But we'll give you plenty of time to look at it before that. And like I said, we have a few moving, uh, targets. Numbers are changing a little right now. Uh, let's see here, the next thing is, uh, financials through September twenty twenty-four. I think she just sent those out today, we just got them settled. Yeah, I told her at two o'clock. And, uh, on the financials, the, uh, it's very similar to what it's been the last few months. Total re, operating revenue was up seven point two percent versus last year. Uh, county sales tax was up ten point four percent, and city sales tax, four point four percent. And that's been very consistent compared to last year. City sales tax has been up just a little bit, and the county sales tax has been up pretty stout. Pretty much gone, and the operating revenues to now. And on the expense side, we've been really steady, we're nine point seven percent below our budget. So, uh, our, you know, we continue to be in good shape for this year, and there hasn't been any big recession or anything in Northwest Arkansas certainly. But I've been following the national economics a lot, and one way we differ from the country is the real estate market's totally dead in the water in the country, everybody talks about it. I mean, it's dead in a door now, and it's still not here. It's not crazy hot like it was, every house doesn't sell in two days, but it's still pretty stout here. You know, if you look at our housing, uh, starts are gonna be lower than la, last year, they were pushing six hundred, but it looks like they'll be four fifty, four eighty, something in that range.
For the year.
Yeah, so it's still, you know, pretty significant considering what the mortgage rates have done.
It's, well, what, what happens is, I'm told that buyers buy down the interest rate, so they pay five thousand more, buy another five thousand, and you get a point two or whatever it is, that's what the realtors...
But most places, and I've talked to a builder, and he said, I'm not slowing up because, uh, people will rent them as long as, like, near the houses, it's done. They'll rent them, and a lot of people are thinking, hell, I, I, hey, I'll rent this house, and mortgage rates will come down, and then I'll flip to a mortgage. He says, as soon as I'm done building them, then somebody wants it, so why should I slow down?
Our, the reserve, uh, position might be, you know, we, she takes that off of the, uh, you know, the audit, year-end audit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I meant to go through and look and find that number, but I didn't.
Yeah.
So what's the, what's the updated number?
Well, our total assets are nineteen point five billion, and if you look at it, receivables are about a million, so it's still around eighteen million. I mean, most of our total assets is cash and investments.
So, but, but again, she takes a number off the audit, that, the number that she populated, you know what I mean, our reserve fund, and she basically doesn't even like, kind of like, the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, when she takes all the things that are planned, capital expenditures, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious what that number is, it didn't make pretty steady.
Yeah, it's been, it takes a bit, yeah, it takes a point and chunk out of it.
Anyway, that's okay if she doesn't have...
Especially if she does the next five, you know, she shows the next five years, and, yeah. So, she's trying to give you the impression, you know, make sure you have the realization that we don't have tons of money, and I'd say that's, it looks like we have tons of money, but yeah, there's a lot, a lot spoken for, and, you know, this next year, we have that building thing, uh, proposed for...
We went into it, you know, this year too, we, we approved several non-budget items for sure, right?
Yeah.
That, that we need to have, but...
Well, uh, car washes and things.
Well, and other things too, though, one just that, you know?
Oh, sure, yeah, different things come up, so.
Other, other things too, yeah.
So, it's an ongoing challenge for sure, but, you know, we're pretty fortunate to convert to a lot of places, you know? And I feel good about what, how twenty twenty-four's been going, it's been surprisingly steady. You know, it's not like it's been fluctuating a lot. We've been a little up on our sales tax, the county's been up pretty stout on their sales tax, and expenses have been good, they've been below what they're supposed to be. It's been just that way every month constantly, so. So let's see, that was, the next item is charter school public meeting. Uh, I just wanted everybody to know that, that there's gonna be a public meeting on November twenty-eighth at five thirty PM at the court. And it's being, uh, run by a charter school founders classical academy. We've conversed with a bunch of, or I've conversed with several charter schools, trying to find people interested in having one in Bellavista. And, uh, you know, I think it'd be nice for people to have a school that was closer to, uh, closer to home.
Creation of a new school in the street.
No, no, I was actually afraid that might confuse a few people, but the idea of this meeting is it's a public meeting for people to come and them to gauge what the interest level is. And so, uh, the trick is to, uh, communicate that to, uh, people with school-aged children and preschool-aged children even that live in the area.
The charter, charter school, what, what kind of ages or grades are they looking at? Are they looking at K-four, K-five?
I think they're thinking, uh, K to eighth, eighth grade at this point.
K through eight?
Yeah, so, and, uh, you know, they have one or two high schools in the area. You could go through high school, but I think a lot of the charter schools, if there's a high school in Bentonville or Rogers, might be a certain logic to having a grade school here. And if the people are happy, then it tends to be a feeder school for their other, but...
So what's, what's the name of the group?
It's called Founder's Classical Academy.
Founder's Classical?
I understand they have shareware around the country there, right?
Yeah, well, last I knew, I think they had around fifty in Texas, and, uh, they've got a couple maybe in this area, but...
Also understand there's a lot of students from Bellavista that attend the, the charter schools, it's been, uh...
Yeah, I, I actually visited one called Lisa Academy, who is financially not, it's a nice school, they're not ready to come up here, but they're on Horse Barn Road Rogers, and they had twenty-five students that lived in Bellavista.
Very STEM-focused.
Yeah, right, STEM-focused. But it's, and there's some charter schools that are very good that aren't in this area and are planning to be, so there's some possibility there. The Walton Foundation has been helping us with this project. But, you know, it's a big decision for them to have a, I think a lot of people didn't think about Bellavista because they don't realize how many kids are here. There's, there's a lot more, uh, school-aged kids here than people realize.
Yeah, what's that, more east and west?
Yeah, yeah.
It's quite beautiful, the west side though, too.
There's some, yeah.
There's, uh, uh, Brown's got a school proposed, more so expressly over there, they bought that one there.
So, anyway, I just want people to know about that. And the last thing is, uh, the one-half mill tax increase is on the ballot for March five. That's for the police.
But, that's, that's the, um...
Police, yeah.
Laffey, Laffey thing?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you said that one.
Well, we didn't get it on in time for November, but you guys had voted in favor of it. It's actually a citizen initiative, so they did a new initiative, and, you know, they get signatures and, and submit it, so we got it on the ballot, and it's gonna be on March five, which is the primary. There'll be a bunch of things on the ballot at that time. I looked up in twenty twenty, seven thousand eight hundred people voted in Bellavista, so I think there'll probably be over eight thousand vote.
About half?
So, yeah, and, yeah, last time, uh, in the general, in twenty twenty, sixteen thousand people voted in Bellavista, which is quite a turnout. So, there'll be other things on the ballot, you know, our US Congress will be on, presidential primaries. Uh, there'll be a Republican one, then it may be a Democrat, I think there may be a Democratic one also. And, you know, different, different things will be on the ballot in March, so, anyway. The election's March five, and early voting starts February nineteen. And I know there'll be early voting at the rec formerly, formerly known as Reardon Hall.
Nice.
Yeah, and I think there's another place in Bellavista, but, uh, I don't know what it is, I'll find out, I'll find that out. So I just wanted everybody to know about that, and to get the word out a little bit.
So the church across the street from Reardon, is that gonna be a polling place now?
No, they, they definitely want it out.
Yeah.
I think last election was pretty wild.
It was really rough for them, and their bridge flood, they got mad, and it's, it's the whole thing, yeah.
There's, there's a couple of guys running for mayor that really pumped up the turnout, but...
It was rough.
I remember standing across the street, and they had church members trying to direct traffic, and so I wasn't surprised when I heard they were...
They had a car accident, the parking lot is a whole thing.
Oh, it was, it was bad.
Well, they both new church, the west side.
I saw that accident, it was, anyway. A New Life Church, yeah, they've been an election place for quite a while, but the primary is a big commitment, you know, it's a couple weeks, and they want you to do the primary and the generals, so. I, I give kudos to the POA, you know, I think a lot of times they don't get the credit they deserve. I mean, it's a big thing to let people use your brand-new place like that for two weeks, so.
Well, it's good service to the community, though.
Yeah, it is, exactly. So, uh, unless somebody has something else, that's pretty much it for tonight, and, and we are thinking about having, uh, work sessions here all the time. So let me know what you think about that, yeah, a lot of people like the informal setting.
I guess my only parting comment is, is I'm disappointed with the, uh, lack of involvement of more than just staff on the fire station proposal, I think that it's a little short-sighted. I'm, I'm not at all supportive of the full program, I'm supportive of the fire station part of it. But I think the plan for the city hall administrative offices, I think, is, uh, is not well-planned, and it's not very suitable for the city's needs long-term. And I think it's, like I said at the planning commission, it's a kicking that came down the road. And now we're up against a wall because we got a, we got a big rate increase at the, uh, at the shopping mall for lease, so we're gonna be facing a, a big lease cost increase there. Uh, so, there are a bunch of things that are encouraging us to go someplace else, but I think it's a bad decision to do what we're doing.
I see, why is that?
Huh?
Why?
Uh, first of all, you have to get a lot of variances in order to make it happen. Does it apply with COVID? Uh, there's just that and the other thing, huh?
What's not playing with COVID?
Uh, looking at the planning commission, uh, agenda tonight, there's a whole list of things out there.
There's a few variances having to do with the driveways and things like that.
Blue driveways, green space, planting, a whole bunch of stuff, and, and I think we're putting two, I think we're putting ten pounds in an eight-pound bucket, and I think long-term is, it, it's not gonna last us a long time. And I think it's a short-sighted solution to a long-term problem, or long-term need, that's my...
Well, so far, that's the only negative opinion I've had, I've had a lot of positive ones.
Well, I think, I think the reality is everyone's looking for consolidation of, of the organization, so that everyone's focused in the mayor's office for one, uh, I think that's always good. But, and, and the fact that the group is all together, but I think, I think it's, I think it's not looking at the big picture and the long-term for the...
Okay.
Have a technical meeting.
Well, I think we're ready to, uh, do adjourn, thank you. Yeah, I heard that, I was just there to laugh.